I'd like to reconvene the regular session at 6:33. Thank you, guys, all for your patience while we work things out and finish up our business. There is nothing to report out of closed session. Trustee Frazier, can you lead us in the pledge?
Would you please stand? Whoa, that's loud. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Let the record show that all board members are here, and our student board member, Leila Armand, is not here tonight. She's receiving a big award tonight, so we're... Congratulations, and happy celebrating, Leila. Before calling for a motion, I'd like to turn the time over to Mrs. Gray to make recommendations on the agenda.
Okay. President Anderson and trustees, I would like to pull two items from our agenda. The first one is 20.4, ratifying the retainer agreement to the Titan Group. We no longer need that, so that can be pulled. And the second one is in our HR certificated report. I'd like to pull resignations and terminations due to some inaccuracies.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Quintero. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment, provided a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know ahead of time so we can assure we are prepared. Civility policy, a reminder, as Education Code 2020 or 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. Now, on to minutes. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the January 23, 2025 special meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Quintero. Are there any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. 10.2.
Make a motion to approve the January 14 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Quintero, a second by Mrs. Buck. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, we are moving into our presentations, so...
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll turn the time over to Mrs. Gray.
Thank you. Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, and executive cabinet members. Our team is pleased to present our mid-year LCAP presentation. And as you know, the LCAP reflects our commitment to providing every student, especially our unduplicated pupils, with the resources, opportunities, and support they need to succeed. Tonight, we will reflect on our achievements, celebrate our progress, and pinpoint opportunities for growth. Leading this critical conversation is our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Olivia Young. She will guide us through today's presentation and listing the expertise of our directors to provide a comprehensive look at where we stand and where we're headed. So, Dr. Young, the floor is yours.
Good evening, President Anderson, members of the board, and Acting Superintendent Renee Gray. It is our pleasure to present to you this evening our LCAP mid-year update.
That was fast.
Done.
Amazing, Olivia.
To begin, I'd like to provide background information on the LCAP. The LCAP is a three-year district-level plan that describes our goals, actions, services, and expenditures in order to support positive student outcomes that address state and local priorities. In other words, it is our district's opportunity to share stories of how, what, and why specific programs and services are selected to meet the needs of our students, and particularly our unduplicated students, which are English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged students, and foster youth. We are in year one of the plan and are in the process of making revisions to actions for year two, based on the effectiveness of each action as measured by the progress toward meeting the metrics. Our current LCAP is divided into nine goals, with the first two focusing on actions provided for all students in order to succeed. The next five goals are focused on closing the achievement gap for all unduplicated students. Our final two goals provide focused actions to address the lowest-performing groups and sites, as well as El Camino Real High School, based on the fact that they receive equity multiplier funds by the state. Beginning last year, a new requirement to provide a mid-year LCAP update was passed. The required components of the mid-year update include updated budget overview for parents, all available mid-year outcome data related to metrics identified in the current year's LCAP, all available mid-year expenditure and implementation data on all actions identified in the current year's LCAP. Of note is that there is no required template for the mid-year update, and the governing board is not required to adopt it. And while it won't be included in or attached to the 2526 LCAP, the information presented tonight is used to inform the development of the 2526 LCAP. And now, Mrs. Joan Velasco will share information on the first component of the mid-year update, which is the budget overview for parents.
Okay, so going over this chart, I want to talk a little bit here about looking at our adopted budget in our first interim and the changes that we had. When you look at the rows up here, and you can see like the orange color, the first row there says total LCFF funding. So that's funding that's provided to all of our students. At adopted budget, which took place at the end of last school year, we had $254 million. First interim, which was reported out in December, it's 254 again, however, it's just a slight change of $226,000. And the reason for that is change in our ADA, since we're funded on our ADA. On the second row, the LCFF supplemental grant funding, that's additional funding that we receive for each student who is an English learner, socio-economically disadvantaged, or foster youth. And again, you can see we have here at adopted budget, 24.3 million. First interim, just changed slightly, 24.2 million, so roughly $30,000, again, two changes in ADA. Moving down, you can see the next row here talks about our federal funds. So at adopted budget, we have 15.1 million, and at first interim, it went down to 13.2. And the reason for this is that whenever we receive federal revenues, it depends on what we're reporting out for expenditures. So as expenditures change, the revenue has to follow. We have to submit the expenditures, and then we get the money. And so that did change, it was reduced by $1.9 million. Some of this was decreased to some ending of federal programs, and so those expenses were not going to take place, so you can see the drop in the revenue. And then on the next line, that's additional money that we receive from state funds, and those are opportunities, like expanded learning opportunities, after-school education and safety, state special ed funding. This is not an all-inclusive list, but those are just some examples. And at adopted budget, we put in $64 million for these state funds, and it was nice to see that we got 67.4 at first interim, so that's an increase of $3.4 million. The next row talks about our local funds. So the local funds are items such as interest income, use of facilities, rents, local grants. We budget for what we know at adopted budget, and then we adjust as we go through the year as we receive it. So you can see we went from 5.4 million to 10.2 million, so an increase of 4.8 million. So the total projected general fund revenues combined for both unrestricted and restricted at adopted budget was 363.4 million. First interim, it's 370 million, so an increase of 6.5 million. And the same line here at the bottom is for the total budgeted general fund expenditures, 390.2 at adopted budget, first interim, 403.2, for an increase of $13 million.
So, Doctor? Thank you. And now, it is our pleasure to share the district's available mid-year outcome data as it relates to the metrics identified in our LCAP. Due to the fact that many metrics are duplicated across the nine goals, we have not organized them by goal, but rather consolidated them in a manner that are easy to follow in the following slides. Before we dive into our data, though, which drives our goals and actions, it's important to take a moment to understand the California School Dashboard, which is the accountability and continuous improvement system by which all schools and districts are measured by in the state. The California School Dashboard provides information about how districts and schools are meeting the needs of California's diverse student population based on multiple measures. It shows performance of districts, schools, and student groups on a set of state and local measures that assist in identifying your strengths, weaknesses, and areas in need of improvement. The dashboard displays performance based on two factors, the current data on the measure and the improvement or lack of improvement from the prior year's results. The performance level or color is determined by the point at which these two levels intersect. The desired colors are cooler, with blue and green being the highest performing levels, and orange and red being the lowest performance levels. We're proud to share that we have very few metrics remaining in red or orange, with almost all metrics being in the yellow, green, and blue range. Our first metric pertains to our English Language Arts proficiency of our students based on the Smarter Balance Assessment that students in grades three through eight and 11 take each spring. At the end of the last school year, 65.32% of all students met or exceeded standards in English Language Arts, which is an increase of 0.57% from the prior year. When we disaggregate the data by our unduplicated student groups, we find that our English learners declined by 0.35%, which may be correlated to the record-breaking reclassification numbers this past year. However, our socio-economically disadvantaged students increased by 3.26%, and our foster youth increased by 8%, showing strong progress toward our three-year goal. Reading and writing are our focus this year, and we've invested significant funding towards a comprehensive writing program, including professional development provided on writer's workshop at the elementary and middle school levels, expository reading and writing at the high school levels, as well as step-up to writing across all grade levels. Our academic support teachers continue to work closely with our elementary students in need of additional targeted support. When we look at the math achievement of our students, we are proud to share that at the end of the last school year, 55.95% of all students met or exceeded standards in math, which is a 2.47% increase from the prior year, putting us on track for our desired three-year outcome. When we disaggregate the data by our unduplicated student groups, we find that all three increased their proficiency, with our English learners increasing by 0.9%, our socio-economically disadvantaged students increasing by 6.4%, and our foster youth increasing by 2.3%, moving us steadily toward our desired three-year goal. We continue to invest significant funding towards after-school math intervention in addition to language arts intervention, with the goal of ensuring all students are meeting or exceeding grade-level standards. We've also adopted a comprehensive assessment approach that utilizes both formative and summative assessments to inform instruction, with interim assessment blocks administered to all students in order to monitor their academic progress and respond accordingly. And now, I'll be joined by our amazing district staff to cover our remaining metrics.
The college career indicator is intended to capture how many students graduate having demonstrated that they are ready to succeed in their post-secondary plans, be it entering college or into a career. Given that there are so many programs and options available to high school students to prepare for their futures around the state, this metric has been designed to allow students to earn the designation of "prepared" in a few ways. In fact, there are 12 different manners through which students can demonstrate preparedness, such as passing two or more AP or IB exams or college courses, completing a CTE pathway while earning A- through G eligibility, and/or passing both of the SBACK exams in math and English in 11th grade. As you can imagine, a student can earn preparedness in multiple ways, but only counts as one student on the California dashboard, similar to the unduplicated pupils methodology in the LCFF calculations. Our college and career indicator showed that 59.8% of all students in the class of 2024 were prepared for college or career, which is a 4% increase from the prior year, meaning we nearly met our desired three-year outcome in our first year. When we disaggregate the data by our unduplicated student groups, we find that our English learners increased by 5.4%, and our socio-economically disadvantaged student group increased by 4.5%, making great strides toward our desired three-year outcome. And no data was reported for our foster youth group, as the sample size was too small, since this was just one graduating class. We have seen great strides in this area, thanks to an increase in CTE pathway enrollment and completion, an increase in our 2023 SBACK scores when these students were juniors, and an increase in the number of students taking and passing AP, IB, and Cambridge course
Our graduation rate showed a district-wide rate of 95.4%, a 1.1% increase from the prior year. This result nearly meets our desired three-year outcome in our first year, prompting us to consider revising and upgrading our goal metric. Disaggregating data by unduplicated student groups, our ELs increased by 7.9%, and our SED increased by 2.6%, surpassing or nearly meeting our desired three-year outcome in our first year respectively. No data was available by our foster youth, as the sample size was too small. The increase in graduation rates was fueled by deliberate four-year planning provided by our amazing high school counselors and college and career technicians, continued use of onsite credit recovery programming, night school, as well as summer school original credit and credit recovery programs. Following our graduation rate, we have our high school dropout rate, which declined by 0.5% this past year, moving us steadily toward our desired three-year outcome. Two additional metrics used to report on student achievement are the advanced placement exam pass rate and A- through G completion rate. We continue to maintain an excellent AP pass rate with an increase of 3.4% from the prior year, leading us to meet our desired three-year outcome in our first year. Three of four of our comprehensive high schools earned designation on the AP honor roll with the Silver Award. Our A- through G completion rate declined by 0.2%, leading us to continue to work closely with our counselors and site leaders on improving outcomes.
Continuing with our academic metrics, we have our I-ready results for English Language Arts. Based on the winter diagnostic administered to students in grades K through 5, we see that 62% of all students were on or above grade level, which is a 4% increase from the prior year. Based on this performance, we nearly met our desired three-year outcome in our first year. When we disaggregate the data by our unduplicated student groups, we find that our English learners increased proficiency by 2%, our socio-economically disadvantaged increased proficiency by 2%, and our foster youth increased by an astonishing 12%, moving toward or exceeding our desired three-year outcome in the first year. Contributing factors to this increase are: we focused on the building blocks of literacy, a strong focus on phonics instruction via professional development, targeted English Language Development instruction, intervention support provided by academic support teachers, small group instruction, personalized instruction via I-ready lessons, and standards mastery, as well as focused interim assessment blocks and performance tasks. Next, we have our I-ready results for math. Based on our winter diagnostic administered to students in grades K through 5, we see that 49% of all students were on or above grade level, which is an unbelievable 21% increase from the prior year. Based on this performance, we nearly met our desired three-year outcome in our first year. When we disaggregate the data by our unduplicated student groups, we find that our English learners increased proficiency by 3%, our socio-economically disadvantaged increased proficiency by 4%, and our foster youth increased by an astonishing 20.1%, with all groups nearly meeting or exceeding our desired three-year outcome in that first year. Additional contributing factors that led to these gains include: a comprehensive math approach combining fact fluency and conceptual understanding, math fellows for targeted best
Next, we have our English learner and long-term English learner metrics. Beginning with our EL reclassification rate and English learner progress, both of these metrics are measured by the summative LPAC results, which is administered to our English learners annually. This past year, our overall reclassification rate increased by 12%, and our LTL reclassification rate is not available at this time. Meanwhile, our EL progress declined by 3.9%, which is in line with trends across the state and the county. The decline represents a higher percentage of students who decreased at least one LP level rather than advancing proficiency, as well as a decrease in the number of students who progressed at least one level on the LP. We have identified ways in which we can address the AL progress indicator, utilizing our EL snapshot goal setting for all English learners, LPAC data analysis, and the EL roadmap as monthly topics during principal meetings. And ongoing professional development are just a few examples we have taken action on this year. While increased reclassification in PYL may contribute to a smaller pool of ELs demonstrating growth, we will definitely monitor progress of remaining ELs to ensure they continue advancing towards proficiency. Finally, our long-term English learner SBACK performance shows a need for continued focus as their performance in ELA and math decreased this past year. Our final long-term English learner metrics are the spring writing prompt, passing grades in the core content classes, and performance on the LPAC by domain. We see that for each of these metrics, that our LTLs have declined in their performance, thus demonstrating that within our EL population, our LTLs need to remain our main focus. To better support our ELs, we have completed training across the district on the EL roadmap and elementary, middle, high school, and administrator toolkits, as we will continue to invest significant resources in GLAD training, beginning with elementary Title I schools. Beginning today, our Title I elementary teachers in grades K through 3 will participate in three demonstration days with teachers, where they will learn to create instructional resources, engage in practice and delivery of these strategies, and receive specific coaching and feedback. Additionally, we have taken an active role in the OCDE LTL network to collaborate with and problem-solve with other districts to increase our knowledge on how to best serve
The suspension rate dashboard measures conditions and climate, providing data on how well our schools offer a healthy, safe, and welcoming environment. Metrics include district-wide suspension rates and those specific to unduplicated pupils. Overall, our suspension rate has decreased to 0.06%, meeting our desired three-year goal of staying under 1%. This is progress, something, this progress is something we will aim to sustain. For unduplicated pupils, suspension rates have also decreased. All three groups have either reached or progressing toward our three-year target. However, foster youth still have a higher suspension rate and slower progress compared to other groups, so we will continue focusing on the unique needs. Key contributors to our progress include updating the PYL USD Behavior Intervention and Discipline Manual, which emphasizes evidence-based proactive prevention and intervention. Additionally, our foster youth liaison collaborates with administrators to ensure understanding of foster youth rights and best support practices. Another area of focus is a metric on chronic absenteeism rates. This metric is used to help measure academic engagement and share information on how well schools are engaging students in their learning. District-wide, our chronic absenteeism rates continue to decrease, as you can see, dropping from 17.8% to 12.2%, reaching at this point our desired three-year outcome of 13.35%. As we can see, with our unduplicated pupil populations, chronic absenteeism rates continue to decrease and are either at or progressing towards our desired three-year outcome. However, our unduplicated pupil student populations continue to have higher rates of chronic absenteeism as compared to our district-wide rates. Contributing factors that we put in place and will continue to implement include updating our attendance monitoring system that includes district-level support and regular monitoring of school and district attendance data, updated attendance monitoring that includes attendance awareness letters and parent communication, collaboration and partnership with local resources such as the Orange County District Attorney's Office and Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove, in support of monitoring students who may be experiencing higher levels of absences. And our upcoming attendance campaign, Attend to Achieve, where we will be rebranding our promotion of attendance awareness, working to support our school communities in recognizing the importance of school attendance, and working to recognize our schools and students who make vast improvements. Now, we turn our attention to the state's local indicators, the first being the implementation of California State Content Standards. While no data is available at this time, we anticipate progressing toward our desired three-year outcome. Several key strategies include: training lead teachers and department chairs across all our schools in utilizing professional learning communities to determine guaranteed viable curriculum based on priority standards, create common assessments, analyze results, and adjust instructional practices accordingly. Our various teams of teachers around the district have been working diligently and making substantial progress in this area. On this next slide are the remaining local indicators, which were used as metrics in our LCAP. While this data is not available at this time, we anticipate meeting all local indicators by the end of this year. Our final metric listed in the LCAP relates to our district climate survey results. As the annual survey is currently being administered, this data is not available at this time, but will be reported in the final LCAP. However, when we analyzed the results from the prior year, we found student belonging and safety declined as students progressed in age. As such, targeted efforts have been made by our secondary principals this year to convene principal advisory committees to analyze their climate survey results with their students, identify a target area they'd like to address, determine the root cause, and devise actions to address it. We anticipate growth in the results this year, thanks to these efforts. And now, I will be presenting the available OCSCS mid-year outcome data on behalf of Dr. Fisher, who is out of town with her family. Of note is that these results are reflective of the school when it was Bernardo Yorba Middle School. Spring 2025 is the first year that OCSCS will have results reflective of its instructional program. Also, there will not be a foster youth line on the following charts for OCSCS, as their population is too small to report as its own metric. The first metric pertains to the ELA proficiency of students based on the SBACK in English Language Arts. As you see here, at the end of the last school year, 58.51% of all students met or exceeded standards in ELA, which is an increase of 2.61% from the prior year. When we disaggregate the data by the unduplicated student groups, we find that the percentage of EL students meeting or exceeding standards increased by 2.7%, showing progress toward the three-year goal, and the socio-economically disadvantaged student population decreased by 0.38%, demonstrating a need for continued efforts. OCSCS's instructional model has a schedule that includes weekly teacher professional development and collaboration days that include data reviews and trainings on instructional strategies to address this need. When we look at the math achievement of these students, again, as measured by the Smarter Balance Assessment, we see that 49.62% of all students met or exceeded standards in math, which is a 1.43% increase from the prior year, moving toward the desired three-year outcome. And when we disaggregate the data by the unduplicated pupil groups, we find that the EL population increased by 1.06%, moving slightly toward the desired three-year outcome, and the socio-economically disadvantaged student group decreased by 1.71%, demonstrating a need for continued efforts to support this student group. OCSCS is currently using the Singapore Math Curriculum, as outlined as a signature component of its education program in the approved charter petition, and hopes to see positive outcomes of this choice in future standardized exams. The final academic metrics are English learner progress and English learner... The final academic metrics are English learner progress and English learner reclassification rate. This past year, there was a decline in the reclassification rate of one point four four percent to twenty point five one percent. Meanwhile, the EL progress indicator declined by ten percent, which, as previously noted, is part of a larger trend across the state and the county. OCSCS is currently using the EL Achieve curriculum in their ELD courses to address this area of need. Examining the suspension rate for the school overall and by student groups shows positive trends. The overall suspension rate declined three point five percent, down to two percent. When we disaggregate the data by the unduplicated student groups, we find that the English learner student group saw a decrease of by ten point six percent, moving past the three-year goal, and the percentage of socio-economically disadvantaged students that have been suspended one or more times decreased by one point six percent to three point four percent, moving toward the three-year goal. OCSCS is pleased with these results that have been a result of school-wide behavior reinforcement initiatives, structured days, and other alternatives to suspension. Examining the percentage of students that were chronically absent for the school overall and by student groups shows mixed results. The school-wide percentage of students that were chronically absent declined by five point five percent, down to thirteen point seven percent. When we examine the data by the unduplicated student groups, we find that students designated as English learner saw an increase in the percentage of students that were chronically absent by point nine percent to twenty point five percent, and conversely, the percentage of socio-economically disadvantaged students that have been chronically absent decreased by seven point three percent, down to eighteen point seven percent, moving toward the three-year goal. While OCSCS has seen positive trends for their all-students group and their socio-economically disadvantaged student group metrics, they will continue to reach out to the families of their English learners to encourage school attendance.
And now, we'd like to share our mid-year expenditure and implementation data for our LCAP actions, which includes OCSCS. At this point in the school year, some metric outcomes are on track for full implementation with thirty percent or more of budgeted actions expended. Some are in progress and have been partially implemented with one to twenty-nine percent of budgeted actions expended, and others may not have started. We will be using the following color coding to indicate each level of progress for each
As you can see, all actions in Goal One are making good progress, and we are on track with reaching full implementation status by the end of the year and are still starting. One point six, the PLUS Program, originally the partnership with Goodwill of Orange County, however, presented too many logistical barriers. So, we have an existing partnership with the Orange County ROP, which we found to be much more feasible. So, the Special Education Department is working closely with the Orange County Regional Occupational Program to provide subsidized employment opportunities within the district for our special education students. We are in the process of working with NO-CROP to develop an MOU so that we can provide this opportunity for more of our students to work within district departments and receive payment for their work internships. Insofar as the Advanced Program, we have not had to utilize the funds for this goal. The Advanced Teachers have made it part of the program to develop a portfolio with each student to link them up with agencies and supports after they earn their diploma. This includes working with the Department of Rehabilitation and local colleges to provide viable pathways for the students for future success. We have had our two Advanced Students successfully graduate from the program in January. We only had two students participating in Advance, and as I mentioned, they have graduated. Insofar as Engaged Community, while this reflects as not starting, we have completed this action for, we completed this action in the prior fiscal year. So, once again, this action is completed but reflects not started due to the fee schedule for the Peach Jar platform. In regards to Goal Two, which provides for our base program, all actions are making good progress, and we are on track with reaching full implementation status by the end of
All actions in Goal Three pertaining to our English learners are making good progress, and we are on track with reaching full implementation status by the end of the year. Action three point three, bilingual instructional aids, due to hiring challenges, we have not been able to fill all vacant positions. Action three point five, L-PAC assessments, which began February first and runs through May thirty-first, thereby, we will be reaching full implementation. Action three point six, instructional materials, we continue to support our teachers with materials to implement GLAD. Three point nine and three point eleven go hand in hand. We will host two more D-LAC and Title I Parent Advisory Meetings, which will complete these actions and reach full implementation. And finally, SPED Training three point four, we are partnering with a vendor who will provide two days of training, February thirteenth and April third, which will then complete this action. Continuing with our EL and LTAL actions in Goal Three and Four, we are on track with reaching full implementation by the end of the year. EL Progress Monitoring Intervention Support, we have upcoming trainees scheduled on L-PAC strategies, and additional secondary GLAD trainings are scheduled for February through March. In regards to our ELD Curriculum four point three, we will be ordering materials in the spring for our secondary EL classes. And Action five point two, McKinny Vento Tutoring, we have yet, not yet fully expended funds allocated for McKinny Vento Tutoring as of this year. McKinny Vento Tutoring funds were reduced to just ten percent of last year's amount. With students spread across the district, we determined that limited hours per student would be the best use of the short-term intensive support or small-group instruction. To maximize impact, we reserve these services for the second semester, allowing students to first access existing tiered interventions. We have communicated with principals and will continue working with them to identify students who would benefit most, ensuring the most effective use of our resource. For Goal Five, addressing our SED students, we are making progress and on track with full, reaching full implementation status by the end of the year. Action five point twelve, Project GLAD for Title I Coaches, this action was completed in the last fiscal year.
As you can see, we are making strong progress on all actions within Goal Six, which focuses on supporting our foster youth students. We are on track to reach each, to reach full implementation status by the end of the year. To quickly highlight some key actions, six point one, we continue to provide tutoring services for our foster youth through our partnership with an outside agency. This initiative has been instrumental in helping our students stay on top of their academic work and receive personalized support when needed. Six point two, mentoring services, our mentoring program has expanded, and we currently have nineteen mentors across various schools in PYL USD. These mentors regularly check in with our foster youth, providing a crucial opportunity for students to build strong, positive relationships with a trusted adult on campus. These relationships are foundational in supporting both the emotional and academic growth of our foster youth students. Six point three, student resiliency and adversity training, the Office of Student Services has been actively engaged this winter and spring. Leading self, leading staff presentations focused on student resiliency and helping staff recognize the unique challenges and adversities our students may face. This training equips our staff with tools to better understand and support all students, especially our foster youth, creating a more nurturing environment for all students. And six point six, professional development in foster youth, looking ahead, we are excited later this spring for our professional development for foster youth, which is scheduled this April. Both our foster youth and foster youth mentors have been invited to attend the upcoming Foster Youth Summit in Orange County. This summit will provide a valuable opportunity for participants to hear from other districts and programs, learn best practices, and collaborate on ways to strengthen support
Regarding Goal Seven, Supporting All Unduplicated Students, all actions are making progress and are on track with reaching full implementation status. Principals will continue to receive guidance and support to expend discretionary site funds in support of unduplicated pupils prior to the end of the school year. Continuing with this goal, we are making progress with our actions and are on track with reaching full implementation by the end of the year. This spring, we'll be bringing together an MTSS Task Force. This summer, we will be fully expending funds associated for high school credit recovery. One planned action proposed to take shape next school year is our Ethnic Studies Task Force, which will collaboratively review our existing multicultural year-long course to a semester course in anticipation of California State Legislation requiring this course as a graduation requirement, beginning with the class of 2030. We will be supporting our DLA program through attendance at a spring conference, and finally, we'll be completing the development of our SIPSAs this spring with site administrators.
Goal Eight pertains to our lowest-performing groups and sites. All actions in this area are making progress and on track to reach full implementation status by the end of the year. Highlights include our RBT program that supports elementary sites with behavioral interventions, as well as our district-wide Attendance Recovery Program. This program has traditionally been at secondary schools, but elementary schools are also beginning to offer attendance recovery programs. In the Special Education Department, we are proud of the work that we have been doing with our Community Advisory Council this year. We have made concerted efforts to increase parent engagement and have changed the format of our monthly meetings. The meeting focus provides valuable information but then gives the parents more time to collaborate with each other. The feedback has been very positive, and the parents' discussions are rich and meaningful. Lastly, there is one area in this goal that is not yet started. However, the good news is that this action, Additional Targeted Support Improvement, ATSI, and Collaboration, is suspended as all of our schools are exiting ATSI this year due to the progress that they have made in their targeted areas.
Finally, Goal Nine pertains to El Camino Real Continuation High School and their use of their Equity Multiplier Funds. All the actions in this area are making progress and on track to reach full implementation status by the end of the year. For Action nine point two, Avid Program, we have not started expending any funds for this action because this is to pay to send teachers and site leaders to Avid Summer Institute. So, we anticipate fully expending funds for this action by the end of the fiscal year.
Overall, we are proud of our mid-year outcome data as it relates to our metrics and have identified which areas we need to continue to focus on. Based on the tremendous progress made in this first year, we will be revising our metrics for the upcoming LCAP to increase our goals for our three-year outcomes. We are also proud to share that the majority of our actions are on track to achieve full implementation by the end of this year. We will use this analysis to help inform the writing of our twenty-five twenty-six LCAP, which will be brought forward to a board study session in April and for board approval in June. We will be convening input sessions with our educational partners all throughout the month, and we have already begun, and we are looking forward to the increased improvement and engagement of our community in our LCAP goals. It should be noted that OCSCS is in the process of developing its own separate LCAP, which will mirror the timeline for our district's LCAP. We would like to acknowledge and sincerely thank the hard work and dedication of our staff, the support of our parents, and the determination of our students to continue our reach for excellence. At this time, we would like to solicit any preliminary feedback and questions that you
Good job. That was a big presentation. We can give some applause for that. Absolutely. Good job. Yeah, being on track looks good. Numbers look good. There are some areas obviously to improve, which, you know, perfection is not realistic, even though that's what we strive for. I think it looks great. I think all the things we've done are putting us in a good position as a district, so, thank you.
I think we shouldn't forget, though, why we got this last year done, and that was the vision of Dr. Churnus and especially Olivia Young having to work specifically very, very hard in this whole team. So, we know that he expected and he demanded a lot of staff and our teachers and everyone, but I think that we need a big shout-out to Dr. Churnus. And another question I had, too, is I guess some of the, I guess some of the rumor mill was, is that our ethnic studies, like, or the multicultural studies, we haven't really offered classes because there's no interest. And so, what I actually heard was the state is not giving us any money to implement the ethnic studies program, and so what I had heard was that we are actually not going to be have to, we're not going to be required to have an ethnic studies class because they are not providing us any money for the teachers and for the thing, so technically, we may not have to do that. It might not have to be mandatory, am I correct?
Yeah, we are continuing to monitor it closely, as well as all the districts throughout the state. At this, in, at this time, it was not in the governor's budget to fund the ethnic studies requirement. However, we are waiting to see if more information will come. We're also waiting to hear if it will be an unfunded mandate, so it could still be a mandate that comes without any additional funding. So, we do plan to continue to offer the course at this time as we are waiting to hear more developments from the state.
All right. Well, once again, great job. These numbers are great.
Thank you.
I have questions. Our scores have dropped in ELA and math for our English language learners, which we talked about a lot. Have you disaggregated the data, or can you disaggregate the data and share with us what that looks like for our Title I schools versus our other schools, and what specifically we're doing for the schools that have the highest need, and how we're balancing that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we did disaggregate the overall performance data by our Title I schools, and we were really impressed with the achievement gains that they had as compared to our non-Titel I schools. However, we did not disaggregate the EL data by LTALs versus overall ELs at the Title I schools, so we'll definitely do so.
That would be great to get some of that information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for everything. I do have just a couple questions and some more information. I know we're doing credit recovery now for elementary. Can you explain a little bit more about that program since it's new to our district?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Sure. Dr. Leon, if she'd like to come and share more. It's not credit recovery per se, it's our after-school intervention program, and so Dr. Leon would be happy to provide details.
So, none of our elementary schools are doing Saturday?
Oh, Attendance Recovery. Yes, so attendance, so, yes, our elementary schools, and having been an elementary principal for twelve years, we have Saturday opportunities for students. It's not meant to be punitive, it's meant to be for attendance recovery, and so our principals are looking into that and weighing out the benefits of bringing students having fun activities and recovering attendance, so we're absolutely exploring that.
And this is not new, we've done this in the past because my children all attended.
Yes, we've done this K-12.
This is the first I've been hearing about it. Okay, and then the next, I'm just always really concerned about our long-term English learners, because they have been with our district for six years, and their scores are never good, unfortunately, and I, and I really appreciate, you know, more early intervention so we don't have LTALs eventually. But I want to make sure more information about what we're doing to support them in our middle and high schools.
And can I ask a follow-up question before you start? As I'm looking at the one chart where it talks about our English learner reclassification rate, actually got positive, it was positive, it doesn't have a number. But it went from, our baseline's fourteen, and it went to twenty-six percent, which is great. Does that mean, and then the following numbers that are dropped by point negative three and a negative two to negative four, did we take the English language learners out, and then those remaining are the ones under? So, that would, if they were all rolled together, the numbers on the bottom would look better, but we took them out, so then our lowest performers there, that's the result?
Exactly.
So, to answer regarding LTALs, that has been a concern actually countywide, district-wide, and statewide. That's a new group. It took ten years for us to get a group now, and that now is the, I think, fourteenth group. The LTALs are now on the dashboard. As far as supporting our LTALs, I believe you are correct. We are looking at early intervention. I worked closely with Dr. Leon at the elementary to get that early intervention. Our goal is always to, for them to reclassify before they leave elementary. That is our goal, and that's what we're pushing with, all our elementaries, to prioritize the reclassification before they go to middle school. If they don't, then we provide extra support at the middle, but our priority is reclassification at the elementary. Currently, I'll just give you some numbers. Currently, we have eight hundred and forty-four opportunities, and I say opportunities because we have currently eight hundred and forty-four students who have a three on the L-PAC, which means they can then go to the four, which gives them the opportunity to reclassify. And we are bringing awareness. That's the other thing that we've constantly been sharing with our teachers, our principals, our parents at all our advisories. We talk about ELs. It's, every time they see me, they say, "Oh, here comes the EL guy," because it's the same message over and over and over because it's awareness. It's awareness of the data, but also it takes, as I say, it takes a village. And so, we truly have embraced that, and so I also want to emphasize our participation in the LTAL network with the Orange County Department of Education. We come together quarterly. We talk about just different things that they're doing, that we're doing. We share best practices. One of the actions that multiple districts are now using is goal-setting for our students. And we started that this year where we put the data in front of the students and have them set goals. And we have seen it work with iReady. When students know their data and know what they're doing, they perform. And we have never done that, and so we've done that. This is the first year we're doing that, and so we anticipate change. We put that in front of our students. And then lastly, the feedback we got from our, not only our secondary parent advisory, but the student middle secondary, it was great. They told us that they needed this. This was a great action. But also, one particular item that they said is, "Go to the students. Ask them." And so we're going to go and ask the students, "Who are LTALs? What do you need? How can we support you?" And that came from the students. They asked us, "Consider going to the source." And all of us in the room were like, "Yeah, we should." And so, those are some of the actions that we're taking. But I agree, this is concerning, not only here, in our community, in our county, and at the state level.
If I could just really echo one thing that Jose said. Thank you for sharing all the amazing work that's happening under your leadership, but that we are really focusing in on the LPAC performance of our students because if they're able to reclassify, we're actually finding that our redesignated students are outperforming all students on the SBAK. It is such a rigorous exam. I know that Mr. Stein jokingly said, "I'm going to take the LPAC and see if I could pass it," even. But we are really focusing on that, and we're looking at LPAC interim assessment blocks and really bringing an awareness to our teachers. We have some of our schools like Melrose, we have a few teachers piloting teacher administration of the LPAC so that our students are more comfortable with their teacher. So we are really trying to find all the different ways that we can attack our English learner and our LTAL performance to better support their language acquisition.
But I would say the greatest, greatest action is awareness. They now know this is important, why it's important, and perhaps before, it was just an assessment they did or they didn't. And especially our LTALs who are in middle school or high school, when you get to be a senior and you're, you have to take this test, you might be like, "I really don't want to take it." But we've really invested the time to say, "Why is it important? What does this mean to you?" And they're responding.
I also think too, maybe a reason our LTALs are struggling is because of a deficit mindset, like, it's kind of being brought up here. I think we should have a hyper-focus on how we improve scores and approach from an assets-based lens. Wouldn't you agree?
I would agree, and that's the training of the EL roadmap, the EL roadmap. One of the principles is asset-based approach, in that asset base, that language proficiency is an asset. And so, this training was essential for all our schools, all our teachers and administrators to begin to shift that mindset of it's an asset, and so.
So as we make the shift, do you think that will, you know, that will help the improvement if we start in this? Because I mean, we're just now making the shift into this, correct?
Absolutely. And again, the awareness of why it's important. If students really know why it's important, just like with CASP, when they take the ELA, their math, if they have no idea why they're taking it, they may or may not really invest in it, just like us. If we know why, we know our why, we go all in. But if we don't, then.
Why am I taking another test?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you for answering my questions, and I really liked the idea of the goal-setting, you know, making the kids accountable of their education and their English acquisition, you know. Making, you know, going to them, asking how they, we can support them, and then also asking them for their, how they're going to achieve that. I think that's really important.
The goal-setting was also a critical part, but also our teachers, the teacher and the student both setting those goals together. And it's been, we've gotten positive feedback from both our students, but also our teachers. We can't forget our teachers. They are essential in this work because they, they set that mindset, and we've seen great feedback from them as well.
And just one last question. How many LTALs do we have in our district right now?
So currently, currently ELs, we have 2,453 students as of today. LTALs, we have 725. And then at-risk, that's another group within that, there are 374. And at-risk just means that they're on their way. If we intervene, we can prevent that. But currently, 725 of the 2,453.
Thank you for answering my at-risk question. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we are going to go to the Dual Language Academy presentation, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Gray.
Okay. So we do have our Dual Language Academy program presentation, and as you know, this is a vital part of our commitment to multilingual learning and cultural enrichment. This program not only equips our students with biliteracy skills, but also fosters academic achievement and global readiness. Today, our team will share the current status and successes of the program, highlighting the impact on student learning, and they will also present ideas for continued growth and improvement in these areas to ensure we provide the best possible experience for our students and families. So, leading this discussion will be Dr. Liz Leon, our executive director of elementary, and Mr. Mike Young, our director of secondary. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. Our district's journey with Dual Language Academy started nine years ago with the purpose being for students to receive instruction in English and Spanish to build fluency in both languages and become bilingual, biliterate, bicultural, and better prepared for college, career, and life. The outcome being that students will be well-prepared candidates for earning the state seal of biliteracy. In order to earn the state seal of biliteracy, students must demonstrate proficiency in both English and a second language through their coursework or assessments. The seal will be placed on their diplomas when students have met the world language requirement, which requires completion four years of coursework with a B or higher, or passing the AP Spanish exam with a three or above, or IB Spanish exam with a four or above, as well as meet the English language requirement, which means completing four years of coursework with a B or higher, or pass a standardized English exam, whether that's the CASP, AP, IB, or SAT. The seal of biliteracy is open to all students throughout the district and state and is not specific to Dual Language Academy students. I'd like to share the historical background of our Dual Language Academy program, which began at Glenview with a 50-50 model in which students are taught in Spanish 50% of the time and English 50% of the time. Over time, we found that the SBAK and California Spanish Assessment results of the third through sixth graders were not yielding the Spanish or English proficiency anticipated. And as such, program adjustments were made to move away from the 50-50 model. In working closely with the principal, the program began transitioning to a 90-10 model in which students are taught in Spanish 90% of the time and English 10% of the time. The percentage of instruction in Spanish decreases by 10% each year until reaching a 50-50 maintenance model in grades four through six, thus bringing our district's model in line with the majority of DLA programs offered by other districts. Additionally, beginning this year, sixth-grade DLA students at Glenview will take a language proficiency assessment to inform their middle school Spanish pathway next year. Additional supports offered to our DLA students at Glenview include, beginning last summer, Glenview DLA students were invited to participate in a Spanish summer school program to address the gaps observed. Beginning this year, Glenview DLA students were invited to participate in after-school intervention to support Spanish development. I would like to now turn it over to Mike Young to share more about the continuation of the program into secondary.
The middle school program model at Oaks consists of students being enrolled in three dual-language courses as a cohort, where teachers deliver instruction in both English and Spanish, Spanish literature, science, and history. Beginning this year, eighth-grade DLA students will take a Spanish fluency assessment to inform their high school Spanish pathway. Beginning last summer, DLA students were invited to participate in a Spanish summer school program to address the gaps observed. Curriculum changes to ensure that DLA students are receiving more discreet instruction on the conventions of the Spanish language in the Spanish literature course. Instructional shifts to ensure that DLA students are able to successfully master the content in DLA science and DLA history. And in order to provide more parent choice, we are considering adding an additional DLA program at Toffrey Middle School in the future. These are all under consideration. The proposed high school DLA model was developed after both researching what other districts offer and based on the needs of our current eighth-grade DLA students. The proposed four-course sequence is comparable to what other high school pathways require. Due to the complexity and rigor of the high school curriculum, core content courses will be delivered in English. DLA students will enroll in the appropriate level of Spanish and follow the course sequence accordingly. Spanish for native speakers, AP Spanish language, and AP Spanish literature. DLA students will also enroll in Chicano Studies, a dual-enrollment course provided by Fullerton Junior College in their 12th grade year. Spanish for native speakers targets students who are fluent in both spoken Spanish, but also may have gaps in their writing or reading skills. Focus areas include grammar review, vocabulary expansion, writing skills development, reading comprehension, and cultural awareness. And this is a new course we would be bringing to Esperanza High School that they have not had in their course catalog. The AP Spanish Language and Culture course teaches skills in understanding spoken and written Spanish, engaging in real-life conversations, and writing various texts. Topics covered include family structures, cultural identity, art, technology, and the quality of life and global challenges. The AP Spanish Literature and Culture course develops skills in analyzing, interpreting, and comparing literary works while relating them to cultural and historical contexts. Students will study poetry, prose, drama, and essays from Latin America, the US, and Spain while exploring their diverse cultural heritage. And finally, the culminating Chicano Studies course through dual enrollment is an interdisciplinary course which explores key social, political, economic, and historical aspects of the Chicano experience in the US, analyzing efforts to preserve culture. It also fulfills AA general education and CSU UC IGETC requirement. The displayed table demonstrates a sample four-year high school course sequence for DLA students enrolled in Spanish coursework each year in high school. Students are still able to enroll in and complete any of the academies offered at Esperanza. Upon both earning the state seal of biliteracy and successful completion of the proposed coursework, DLA program completers will earn a graduation stole to wear proudly during their commencement ceremony. Feedback was received from the eighth-grade DLA parents on February 3rd. It was largely positive and reflected a desire for choice. Feedback included, first, an interest in DLA students being clustered in the Spanish for native speakers and AP Spanish courses. This will be explored within EHS's master schedule next year. Second, an interest in having DLA students assigned to one counselor. This will also be explored with Esperanza. Third, an interest in allowing the pathway to be completed to all four high schools instead of solely Esperanza. We confirm that earning the state seal of biliteracy and completing this pathway is actually available at all four comprehensive high schools. Finally, an interest in DLA students' participation in additional pathways as their schedule permits, which, as I aforementioned, we confirm this is an option available to every student. In some cases, may take the DLA K8 learning and apply it to their learning within the Medical Sciences Academy at Esperanza, for example, without pursuing the high school DLA course sequence. In other cases, students may elect to remain in the DLA pathway through 12th grade and deepen their Spanish language proficiency. We are working closely with Principal Saratsa to address the input received from the parents as we proceed with this model. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
I have some questions. Thank you for this. I know that it was requested by even the community, and they were very interested in it, as were we. I was hoping it would be a little bit more robust, to be frank. Having one class option for each year, especially looking at that ninth-grade year, if you're not a native speaker, then where does that go? I, what isn't included here is there was a list of other programs around the county and around the state that also had different programs that you gave samples of. And I just wanted to highlight some of those because I thought they were very good as well. So maybe we look at it and how can we maybe do something even a little bit more? So, in some of the program, or in some of the districts, they had two classes per semester that were Spanish, Spanish-based, and to help keep that process up, there were some districts that had content courses in social studies and science that were also tied in Spanish. We do have the ROP class there with medical sciences. There's a lot of need for medical terminology in both languages as well, so that might be something to think about. And then one of them talked about a capstone course, which I thought was interesting as well, with Capstone Project and something related there. One mentioned Spanish interpreting and translation, a third language, adding that third language on, or even cross-cultural competence. What I am kind of interested in as well is I like the, adding the Chicano Studies as an option. And possibly, and I was going to mention this as it comes up when we're looking at civics, looking at how, and kids are impacted with, with options. And our requirement might be for our multicultural studies course to be one semester, but when we're looking later at the civics course, it's a two-semester course where students can take it one semester or take it both. So my idea would be, can we also do a multicultural studies program that is a semester or two so that kids can add more, cover that, that requirement, but also learn about all of those things that we need? So imagine a student that would take a civics class one semester and the multicultural or Chicano studies that second semester, or one that just wants to take one of those all year, just giving more options. So, I know we have written a curriculum for the whole multicultural studies as a full, long year, but can we look at it as having the year-long option, but also adding a semester option that can be expanded, that still satisfies all of that, but also provides that opportunity for the students? So, I like the direction, and I'm interested in what potentially more we could add to it. So, thank you very much.
I'd have to agree with that. It's a great, great start. But just having, basically, it would be an hour a day in their, in speaking Spanish in high school. That's going from, you know, the 50-50 model all the way down to an hour, which is a big drastic jump, I know. Just with my daughter who went through it too, it's just, even just a year of out. She was already back to practicing her Spanish in her freshman year in college and just being out of the program for a year. So, with her seal of biliteracy as well. So, I just think, yeah, another class or two would be great to add to it if possible because it's very important. I mean, now it's just going to even be, like I said, in the medical field, you know, schools field, you know, education, it's just so much more important to have those bilingual speakers that it's, it's such a huge added asset for them. So to keep it up, it would be great, and especially the ones who started in kinder. To be able to fully finish through the program and with a quality, good, robust program would be wonderful.
The only thing that I would like to add is I think you guys are on a great track concerning that just a few months ago, we weren't even going to be offering this in high school. And once again, I'd like to thank Dr. Churness for fulfilling the promise of nine years ago that we would have the high school option and, you know, bringing this forward. And so I thank you for all of the work, and especially with, you know, some missing persons. And so I thank you for all of the work and especially with, you know, some missing personnel. Thank you for what you've been able to accomplish so far, and I look forward to what the program is actually going to turn out to be.
Yep, I echo all the sentiments. I think there should be a way that we could figure out how to add an additional course, at least optionally. I know finding instruction for that might be difficult at the high school level, but that's, I think it's doable. So I'd like to see that as well.
And I have one more question, I'm sorry. We said that we're going to add another middle school program. Is that financially responsible, considering that our class sizes in our DLA programs right now are so small? So that was kind of a question that we had as we're looking at, you know, finances and things like that.
Yeah, that's a great question. I want to say that as we were exploring, expanding the range of DLA program models in the middle school setting, something we found in examining how other districts offer their DLA programs and how it extends into the high school setting, is that the bigger the program is, the more actually easy it is to implement higher coursework requirements at the high school level. So we want to expand the range of options for middle school students as they look to either go to Oaks for the DLA model or Tuffrey, knowing that students at Glenview can go to both. As one of their options, maybe they want to pursue something like an academy program that's at Eldorado, so it puts them on that trajectory and that track on that end of town. But all of these are things that we're thinking about as we explore it. We already have, I want to say, two of the three teachers at Tuffrey with the appropriate credentials to do it, to teach science in Spanish, so it wouldn't affect the staffing so much.
The exploration of Tuffrey is out of response to parent requests, and so we have Glenview dual-language parents who are asking for another option as well. And so we're just trying to be responsive to.
Of course, and that makes total sense. I'm just wondering with the small class sizes, you know, like, that was the question.
Could we help with the class sizes as being, maybe there's some native speakers who can start in seventh grade? That necessarily, just because you're a native speaker doesn't mean you know how to write and, you know, the whole thing. So maybe they can add on and jump on in seventh grade and continue through high school?
And that's absolutely something we identified with Principal Barton, that especially in the early implementation years, that she'll need to round out the section so that they are at higher enrollment with native speakers or newcomers who may benefit from having access to those courses.
I like the idea of broadening it as well. Have a bigger base so that we can maybe do more at the top end.
Are we anticipating rolling this out at Tuffrey in '25, '26?
We are.
We are unsure yet.
We are hoping not to roll it out in '25, '26. Principal Barton has a lot on her plate and plans for the coming year, and so she's really focusing in on Avid and Avid Excel, and so her desire would be the following year.
Got it. So we have time to get that part figured out because that is a lot of logistics there.
Yes, exactly.
And that would be a lot of letting the community know that they have options. And if your kid's a Spanish speaker and they want to join in a middle school program, that they have those, there's another option for them to come in. My question, and with all high schools being able to basically assist in the dual-language program, that kids could go to any high school and still graduate with that certification, I would love us to figure out a way to foster a Zoom class or a club where they meet together, maybe it's only on a monthly basis early, where they can gather with their peers, you know, maybe now they're all spread out overall for high schools, they can share their experiences. Also, that might be a chance for enrichment for these students where, let's just say they're in the medical, somewhere in the medical class at Esperanza, and maybe somewhere in the ED Law at Eldorado where we bring in that vocabulary and help them, you know, bring that skill level up and expand their vocabulary in their career path as well. And so I think that would be something really to look into doing and figuring out a way to make it. So I don't see it as a regular class, like on a daily basis, but, you know, meeting occasionally. And that would be something, I think, to go back and ask the students if that's what they're interested in, in maintaining those relationships, especially as the program grows through high school, you got more and more students. I mean, next year's the first year, but it will just grow and expand. And maybe that's something that even the students eventually could start leading themselves. I really like the idea of expanding the program, like I said, and I really love the idea of a capstone. And I don't know what that means, if it's like a special project, maybe they are, they do like a cultural exchange program over the summer, or they get an internship at some type of an office or medical facility where they are speaking Spanish in a professional. And I really think somewhere we need to add a class with some translations. And I understand that the translations come, it's more of a college level, but as I was looking through, like Mrs. Buck, what other schools were offering, they were offering translation courses. And I think that would be something very valuable to our students to have as they move forward to the real world. So that's what I'd like to see. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, we're on to 11.3, Alternative Education Programs, and I'll turn the time over to Ms. Renee Gray.
Okay, lastly, our last presentation of the evening. We're going to be presenting on our district's alternative education programs. So our alternative education programs play a crucial role, as everybody knows, in ensuring that our students have access to learning environments that meet their unique needs. So by offering diverse pathways, as we do here in our district, we empower our families with choices. That's something that we've really focused on a lot this year, allowing our families to find the right fit for their child's educational journey. So our team will be providing an overview of these programs, sharing about their impact, successes, and opportunities for growth. So our goal is to ensure that all our students, regardless of their learning style or circumstances, have support in an environment they need to thrive. So we have Dominique Polchow, our principal of BVVA and Parkview, as well as Dr. Taylor Holloway, our Educational Services Assistant Director and USI Program Director, who will be presenting to you on our alternative programs.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gray. Independent Study in California is an alternative educational program that allows students to learn outside the traditional classroom setting while meeting the state educational requirements. This alternative instructional strategy offers flexibility to meet individual pupil needs, interests, and styles of learning. Credential teachers supervise and evaluate student progress. Students are expected to meet the same educational objectives as all other pupils and curriculum must align with the state standards and the district's graduation requirements. By laws, independent study education is to be substantially equivalent to classroom PYLUSD features two independent study schools, Buena Vista Virtual Academy and Parkview School. Both programs fall under the independent study guidelines and legal requirements as outlined by the California Department of Education. What delineates the two schools is the learning model and the program offerings. Buena Vista students learn 100% of the time online, while Parkview students have a blended learning model benefiting from a mix of at-home instruction and small onsite classes. Historically, Buena Vista originated as La Entraida High School, which opened in 1985. In 2001, Parkview K-8 School was established and later expanded to include high school in 2006. When the pandemic struck in 2020, La Entraida High School was renamed Buena Vista Virtual Academy and began serving K-8 students as well. The timeline highlights how both schools have evolved towards a shared K-12 independent study school model, differing primarily in their method of instructional delivery. Buena Vista and Parkview are both WASC-accredited institutions, offer A through G-approved courses, and students have the option to attend concurrent classes at other PYLUSD schools and duly enroll at community colleges. Currently, both independent study schools are housed on the Parkview campus while sharing the same school administrator, counselor, and office staff. Both sites have shared staff meetings, school site councils, and Parent Teacher School Association while maintaining accountability under the California Independent Study laws. BVVA was initially La Entraida High School. In response to COVID, the school converted to Buena Vista and serves students in grades K-12 enrollment, as you will see on the first bar of this graph. As we look at the enrollment trends over the past five years, that show both Buena Vista and Parkview increased dramatically during COVID. Buena Vista shows a decline since then, as does Parkview, with the exception of the 24, 25 school year due to the implementation of the USI pathway. When we look at enrollment by grade spans, it's apparent that Buena Vista Elementary Program is overstaffed with only having nine students enrolled. Per the Apple contract, the student-teacher ratio in independent study is one teacher to 34 students. Currently, Buena Vista has four teachers, while Parkview has 11. Buena Vista and Parkview, Buena Vista Virtual Academy and Parkview are dedicated to providing diverse, high-quality educational opportunities. When we look at the average daily attendance, it's calculated differently from traditional in-person schools. Instead of tracking seat time, ADA is based on the completion of assigned work rather than physical attendance. The first semester daily average attendance for Buena Vista K-12 is 89.75, and for Parkview, the average daily attendance is 98.6. Again, both programs are dedicated to providing diverse, high-quality educational options tailored to meet the needs of all students and each has specialized features. Buena Vista Virtual Academy proudly holds number five spot among the best public online high schools in California, according to NISH, which is a platform that provides school rankings, reviews, and data. Some highlights of 2024 showcase the achievements of three distinct student groups at Buena Vista. An 11th grade student who was duly enrolled at Fullerton College, he participated in the implied engineering club and secured first place in the 2024 NASA Minority Innovative Design for Space Competition. High school students who triumphed in Adobe for Education's November Creative Challenge Contest, and two Buena Vista students who stood out as finalists in the 2024 Holocaust Parkview offers a comprehensive educational experience, featuring a transitional kindergarten program, a highly sought-after performing arts program, and student leadership opportunities. Students can choose from honor courses, advanced placement courses, NCAA-approved courses, and can attend small onsite classes weekly. New this year, student athletes are learning through Parkview, that are learning through Parkview have the opportunity to apply and attend the Universal Sports Institute program, which is available to students in grades 3 through 12. To summarize, both independent study schools in PYLUSD empower students with a flexible, personalized experience while maintaining the high standards of traditional education. I will now turn it over to the Director of USI, Dr. Taylor Holloway, who will share more about what Parkview's Universal Sports Institute program has to offer.
Thank you, Ms. Polchow. Good evening, everyone. My name is Taylor Holloway, and I serve as an Assistant Director in our Educational Services Department, and I oversee the Universal Sports Institute, or USI, as I will refer to it tonight. I am pleased to share with you updates on USI and solicit your feedback regarding the future of this wonderful district resource. As you are aware, this pathway became available for students attending Parkview School this past fall and serves students in grades 3 through 12. Students in this program enjoy this educational option, which allows them to better balance their academic responsibilities and athletic commitments. The implementation of USI was guided by one of our local businesses, The Training Lab. This community partner provided their expertise for the initial vision of USI. USI was created with these three main objectives. They are to, one, attract new students from outside the district and retain current students; two, provide a flexible learning environment and specialized athletic training opportunities for students; and three, to provide a sports education and athletic training resource for the district. We are proud to share that we are meeting the first two objectives as this program is drawing in students from throughout the county and adjacent counties. We are currently enrolling students in our second semester program and for the next school year. Spots are quickly filling, again demonstrating a desire for this type of alternative educational model in our community. When we first opened this past fall, we had roughly 70 students committed to this pathway. New students joined throughout the first semester, with 97 students currently participating, 30% of which are students coming from out of the district. Our hope is that enrollment will reach somewhere between 150 and 200 students for the start of the next school year. We would assume that the current enrollment trend continues with 30% coming from out of district, excuse me, out of district. Out of the students enrolled, we find that the majority are in middle and high school. We see larger numbers in these grade spans because they have the unique opportunity to concurrently enroll with their comprehensive school sites. In other words, our middle school and high school students can train at USI, take the majority of their courses via independent study at Parkview School, and also attend their comprehensive middle or high schools for up to two courses, participate in their school sports program, and enjoy various school activities. Our central training hub is located on the campus of the Orange County School of Computer Science. It's important to note that USI is not an OCSCS program despite being located on that campus. There are also satellite USI locations across the district, which include Yorba Linda High School for Baseball and Softball, Eldorado High School for Volleyball and Basketball, and Venture Academy, where BC Adaptive Fitness works with roughly 60 students in our adult transition program. As with any new program, it takes time to establish an identity. We are a program for any student who has a desire to improve their athletic performance and participate in Parkview's independent study model. Ethan is one of our athlete success stories. He's an incredible student-athlete who loves playing baseball and being active. As you will see in this video clip, his balance, coordination, speed have all improved tremendously in just a couple of months with us. Let's watch together. This is Ethan when he first began at USI, kind of struggling a little bit to do the karaoke. Here he is, gliding across the field after only two months of training with us. His parents shared, let me see how I get, escape? His parents shared that they have seen improvement in his academic focus and goal-setting development. They have also seen him become more self-motivated and more confident with his social interactions. Keep it up, Ethan, we are so proud of you and all of our students at USI. Additional training opportunities have been brought to the Students Adventure Academy through our partnership. through our partnership with BC Adaptive Fitness. They work with our adult transition students to improve their fitness levels and strengthen the movements needed for them to function independently. Many Students at Venture have benefited tremendously from this opportunity. Thank you to Coach Brad Clark and his team. Additional training opportunities were also provided to students in our district through the Before School Speed and Agility Workshops. Our middle and high school students took advantage of these very early morning training sessions, again demonstrating a desire for such opportunities in our community. Our goal remains to ensure that our high school sports teams and athletes benefit from USI. We look forward to working with the Board of Education and community partners to expand these offerings and maximize the use of this amazing facility that we now have in our district. With our main training hub located on the campus of OCSCS, the students at this school benefit from the opportunity to use the space for one of their mini-electives, as you can see here. Roughly eighty students participate each week in these classes. All of these wonderful programs are supported by highly skilled coaching and support staff. We have one full-time and two part-time strength and conditioning coaches who ensure the safety of our students while training. We also have sports-specific coaches in the areas of basketball, baseball, softball, wrestling, volleyball, soccer, and dance. We contract with Access Human Potential to provide mental performance training for students, and BC Adaptive Fitness to provide the adaptive fitness training that was mentioned earlier. In addition to our coaching staff, we have an Assistant Director, me, Secretary, Part-Time Instructional Assistant, Recovery Center Supervisor, and Athletic Supervisor. Each plays an integral role in supporting the development of our students. Here's a more detailed look at our staffing. Shown here are the twelve coaches we have for various sports. Their hours vary from as few as two to up to twenty hours per week. If you break this down by the number of students they serve, you will see that we have the following. Twenty-four students in wrestling, eighteen in our baseball and softball program, five in volleyball, eleven in soccer, and twelve in basketball. We have five participating in our dance classes, and flexibility is one of our most popular training options, with roughly half of our students taking advantage of these sessions. Here's, here are additional support staff who are involved in USI. The FTE, or Full-Time Equivalent, listed next to each staff member, represents the percentage of their job assignment that is associated with USI. For example, USI and OCSCS share a custodian, or the custodian here, and campus supervisor, therefore seeing a smaller FTE. A significant investment has been made to implement this pathway. These are the total expenditures and revenues broken down by school year. In 2023-24, a total of roughly one point four million was spent, with close, or roughly one point two million being the contract with The Training Lab to outfit USI. Two point eight five million was spent this school year on additional startup expenditures, district-wide administrative costs, and staffing. One point three six million in revenue was collected based on the enrollment numbers. With the current enrollment, we recognize that there is a deficit of nearly one point five million, and we have made preliminary staffing reductions, which took place in January. Additional staffing reductions have been identified, which will be finalized based on the enrollment at USI for the next school year. With the significant investment, we understand it is our responsibility to operate more conservatively moving forward. I look forward to working with our Board of Education, Acting Superintendent, Executive Cabinet, and the community to reestablish a unified vision for USI, explore additional revenue sources, and seek ways to maximize this wonderful resource.
Thank you, Principal Paul Chow and Dr. Holloway, for demonstrating how providing alternative educational models is essential to meeting the diverse needs of our students and to provide increased parent choice. Our hope is that the information shared this evening will aid in your discussion about our district alternative education programs. We currently have two distinct county, district, school, or CDS, Unique Identification Codes, for two distinct sites, when in actuality, we have one principal running three different programs under the same site. This is something for the Board to consider because in doing so, the accountability and compliance requirements would be streamlined, allowing the principal to submit one school plan for student achievement, maintain one budget, undergo one WASC accreditation process, which would allow more time for the principal to address student and family needs. The principal has planned engagement meetings and surveys to obtain input from the families and staff involved in these programs. We look forward to sharing the information with you as the discussion unfolds in order to aid your decision-making in the future. Lastly, knowing that our goal is to attract and retain students, after a robust discussion of programs, which aids in parent choice, we know that we will need to market these programs to neighboring communities so that they know all about the amazing options offered within our district. This has included billboard campaigns, social media campaigns, flyers, and website pop-ups in the past. We thank you for your time, and would like to open it up now for any questions you may have.
I'd like to take the first opportunity to sing the praises of Parkview. If you don't know about Parkview, it's one of the best things we have in our district. Not that anything else is not as good, I'm just saying, Park is amazing. And I did not realize that we had three site numbers, and so the reporting is, that's very inefficient. Let's fix that. I think we should talk about that, but let's fix it. The, the things that are happening in USI, connection with Parkview and Buena Vista, the options that our students have and our families have, is what makes, is one of the things that makes our district so unique. And I just really, really am excited to see how this continues to grow. I know there are several families that were going to jump in, but they wanted to wait and see what happened. They wanted to see, how's this gonna work? So I, hopefully we don't get too overloaded for this next year, but I think that, safe to say, our enrollment's gonna be good there. And I love that we are already integrating the USI programs with all of the high schools so that all students can be involved. And I know we've talked about doing more of that. Question I have about reduction in staffing. Does that impact serving all of the students of our district? Because obviously, the focus is the students that are enrolled there. However, the expansion of serving, like I know the wrestling team from Esperanza or somebody was in there in the recovery this last week because they're at CIF, go Esperanza Wrestling. But is that gonna impact how we do that? Are we gonna have to be a little more creative in the staffing for the additional students that are gonna be able to participate?
I think it's really gonna depend on our, our enrollment, but at our current staffing, we can absorb more students and definitely service more of the district.
And, and as I understand, enrollment has opened yet, or it's not opened yet, for twenty-five, twenty-six?
It is open.
It is open.
Applications are open, they are on our website, and on Parkview's website, we share a common application.
Wonderful. Go sign up, everybody.
I've just wanted to address the merging of BVVA and Parkview, as we're hoping that they both grow in numbers. I just don't know how maintaining the quality of programs with one principal for three programs is really gonna affect that. As of now, it's small numbers. You can, but hopefully, we're gonna be growing and gaining more students. To me, it seems more, more, I don't wanna say efficient, but more, makes more sense to have a principal for maybe just USI Parkview and a principal for BVVA, with two different site codes possibly, rather than three, just because, again, if we grow in numbers, they're two different total learning models, two different populations are serving. That, to me, makes more sense than blending all three together, because that's just a big, that's a lot.
Piggyback on that. The question about if we merge the numbers, as I'm just thinking about this, does that affect, I know because Parkview has certain accreditations, that BVVA does not, because of the instructional style. Is that an issue? I mean, it's high school is mostly the impacted, but would that be an issue?
If we merge, then all of the Buena Vista students will have access to the NCAA-approved courses, honors courses, advanced placement. So we went, they would continue to be two different learning models, the virtual and the in-person, sorry, at-home and small onsite classes, but they would have equal access to, to everything.
If they remain separate, would BVVA be able to get those same accreditations?
That's something that we can look into, definitely.
But they would have to, like the conversation we were having about when OCSCS was talking about bringing it in, they'd have to go through that whole process. So the fact that they can get access to that, that's a big deal.
We knew it was a desire to get the BVVA courses NCAA-approved. However, it has been submitted in the past, and it has been denied, and we've been assured that it would not be possible based off of the learning model. And so it remains only possible to the Parkview side currently.
Is it because of the?
Sorry, the four, that was the four-week courses, but if it goes eight-week courses, then it was a possibility, correct? Wasn't that an option for the NCA track?
Dr. Gray, do you mind joining this conversation? I know this is something that you had been closely supporting last year.
I will have to check the documentation that we got from the NCAA as that file came to us about fifteen years ago, it was before my time. But I can check the details and the feedback that we got, so we can explore that.
Yeah, because the, the model's interesting, that, that block like that is, is interesting, but, yeah.
Okay. We're talking kind of, we're talking two different schools and adding a program. So I think to keep our discussion focused, maybe we should just take one at a time. And so we can ask all of our questions about BVVA, all of our questions about Parkview, and then all of our questions about USI. And that would just help us stay focused and, and keep us all on the right path. So let's start with BVVA. Anybody have questions just regarding BVVA?
My question might talk about Parkview, so.
Mine are all kind of combined.
That's, it's all tied together, so I don't see how we could just say a question about BVVA without talking about Parkview.
Okay, I was just trying to save my brain, but that's okay.
I just, actually, I do have a question just for BVVA. With the numbers declining, how do you see, have students been leaving? Is the interest is not there, or are they going to stay in our schools, like going to a traditional model, or what's going on with the numbers?
You know, there's a variety of different reasons. Some are staying within district and have opted to go back to traditional school. Some have opted to choose charter schools. That is very popular within the independent study model. And other reasons, you know, I know some moved out of state. So those are the various reasons.
I'd like to add a various reason also. I am aware of the website being turned off in July of 2023. Parents were no longer able to access the ability to enroll in BVVA. When they looked up where to call or where to go to the school, the school had been moved, and they had no way to get ahold of them. That had a tremendous effect on what happened to enrollment. It went from twenty-twenty-three to a hundred, from a, oh, go back even further. So twenty-twenty-one, not three hundred and ninety-seven students. Twenty-twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-one students. Twenty-twenty-three, a hundred and seventy-four students. And in this December, we had ninety-six students. Nine of those from elementary school, as was mentioned, but the prior year, we had thirty-five. When we turn off the ability for kids to enroll, parents to enroll in a class, in a, in a school, they can't do it, so it automatically impacts enrollment. We spent a lot of money and effort putting out advertisements for USI, and at the same time, we're taking everything away from Buena Vista. I thought it was improperly done. It was done not fairly to both schools. Moving the school weeks before the end of the school year, disrupting them, putting them in another, on another location, that has impact on the parents that are attending there. I'm not interested in merging these at this point. I want to invest a little bit in advertising, marketing. That website enrollment just came up in January of this year. We need to open it, put out some information, give people some info on what that is. My daughter attended La Intra. It was incredibly valuable to her. She would not have been a Parkview candidate. Those two programs are entirely different. And to have two principals, or one principal over both of those is like being a principal at two different schools, with two, like a charter school and a regular school, or an elementary and a middle. They're totally different. Even though you have teachers and you have staff, it's, it's not the same. So my goal would be to invest a little bit in both of the schools, boost both of them up, look at what that would look like in the future, in a year, see what the enrollment looks like, see if it recovers at all, and then decide if we need to make any adjustments. We have invested a lot of money in this program. And when you calculate out just the two point eight million dollar expenditures from twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, with ninety-three students, that's thirty thousand dollars per student. And that is way above what we get and way above what we spend for students in other programs. When this all began, my, my dream of it was that it was held in all of the four different high schools, so that it was accessible to all different programs. We have those kids that are going to those schools and working out at those schools and in those sports. So I don't understand why we can't house them at each of those high schools and still have the USI program, but have it be a district-wide program that's not housed at Orange County School of Computer Science. They've lost their NPR, they've lost their library. What can we do to improve the outcomes for all students, not just the ninety-three or potentially two hundred that are at USI? When we include all of the numbers for USI, USI is a program, so it does not get ADA. The only organization, or the only places that get ADA are those two schools. So you're taking money from other places and putting it into that program, which I can appreciate as long as it's balanced. It doesn't appear to be balanced at this time, and I would like to learn more about it. As we get into later in the, in the agenda, there's some items on there that we, actually, we got, and it's not even on the agenda. We asked for additional information and the expenses from this year. I went through the expenses from, from USI in general last year and this year, and there's no expense for the signage. So if the signage is missing off of that list, it, I couldn't find it. So maybe if you could identify where that is in that little add-on, because it seemed like that was missing. So if there's other things missing, do we have a full comprehensive understanding of what this really costs? Additionally, when you go back to the Training Lab contract, there was an eighty thousand dollar fee that we paid for licensing. And it was a half, it was a half-cost, half-price for the first year, and then there was the, the, the app, the software, for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two hundred students. That's ongoing. That's not included in any of the ongoing costs that were listed. So I still don't really think that I have a full understanding of the cost. And before we would decide to move any of those all together and blend them, I would like to see, and I, and I, we need to invest a little bit more in Buena Vista and Parkview separately and help them become the schools that they have been in the past. They're award-winning. As you go back and look in twenty-twenty, there were forty out-of-district students at Parkview, I mean, sorry, at Buena Vista, and twenty-three in twenty-twenty-one. So we were drawing in people from other districts, even above the thirty. So I, I like the idea of bringing other people in from other districts because it helps fund this, but thirty isn't enough for a three-million-dollar investment, in my opinion.
I understand the, the thought of saying, let's have it at every campus. However, the model is built to not be like a PE class. It's done throughout the day, which is why the independent study program, we talked about this before. It doesn't really work as this model at other locations. So I like it the way it is. I think it's a great investment, and I look forward to what happens with it.
I just have something to add to that. With it happening throughout the day, actually, we just, I just toured today. We had a conversation that from one o'clock on, it's basically, nobody's really there because they're at their schools. We had a conversation that from one o'clock on, it's basically, nobody's really there because they're at their schools in their six-period sports. So to me, if we can get that strength and conditioning person who, to push out, because I know every team, football would love a strength and conditioning person, basketball would love one. So if we can push that person out during the afternoon to cover those other schools, that would make sense to me because maybe the facility is not being used itself, but at least those, they're, they're actually, the people themselves are out doing something, and it is benefiting the district. And also see if there's some way we can get some of those teams in there during that time, maybe off-season teams in there. Because yeah, like today, there was nobody there, and I was there at three o'clock, and no teams were utilizing it at all. So I think there's ways that we can schedule things to get everybody in there. Because I do see how it may be a little tricky to push it out to the schools, but people can be pushed out to the schools. Maybe not necessarily the equipment, but people, the program, the, you know, the app, things like that. You know, I know there's a lot of athletes out there in, in the regular sports settings that would love to use that app and maybe go in for their initial metabolic testing and then maybe get tracked at their schools during that. So they would maybe be able to use that as well. So there's a lot of different things I think we can examine, but yeah, it definitely needs to be used more than it is now.
Okay, I have a lot of questions. And I'm going to start with BVVA. First of all, it was very upsetting to a lot of people last year that there was an enrollment. I saw many posts about that. People contacted me about that. And I want to know, from years before to this year, it seems like the education model is completely different as well. Is that correct?
Yes, we did do away with the one class a month model.
Was that the hybrid model?
No, that was, the hybrid model was when they came into in-person, and then the one class a month was what was typical for Buena Vista.
Can I add to that? Because my daughter attended that. That model worked so well for her because she was one of those kids that needed to leave the comprehensive high school for a while. That was the whole point of, of going online and managing that. Switching to the full semester like that for her would have been too much. She moved over there because she needed little chunks. And, and from there, she went over to El Camino, which was also smaller chunks, and it worked well for her. We, we'd have to maximize what we have for students. I'm worried that if we change that, then they're leaving. They're going to go find us that, that can meet that need for them.
Yeah, I think we should go back to where we were. We earned all these awards for the things that we were doing, and now we're not doing them, and we're having people leave. I think that's kind of a correlation. So I would love to see us go back to the models in the past, what we were doing with BVVA. And because people enjoyed that and they were attending, yes, smaller rates than another, like our comprehensive high schools, but it did fill those voids and it fed, it filled those needs for those students.
If I can break in real quick, though, that BVVA was established in 2020 for COVID. And so when we had a lot of that, there was a lot of kids that chose not to go back in person, and they chose BVVA. And so I think some of the decrease is because kids went back in person, they chose a different thing. I think that there was a quick fix for that COVID year, and then.
What was the, can I ask a question?
I think the history model that was shown earlier shows that, that that school changed names because it went from a high school model to a K-12.
K-12. Can I ask a question about the model change? Was there a change between prior to 2020 and then it moving to Buena Vista in 2020?
I don't believe so, other than adding the K-8 program.
Other than K, and K-8, okay, so.
Which, yeah, they do not do, elementary and middle school don't do the one class a month. So that, what remained the same is K-8. What changed this year was the one class a month for high school students.
Got it, okay.
I know COVID did have something to do with the enrollment and the decrease since then, but I really think there's a potential there to increase. It may not go back to three-hundred and some students as it was before, but I think there's a really good chance that it would increase from it is now, from what it is now, just because families have, like you said, there's different reasons for take, going away from the traditional model, and if we can offer that to them, I mean, it could be a family who travels a lot. Or, you know, it could be someone who wants to maybe take, you know, travel for the year with their family. It could be a situation of like a parent being sick and they can't really get them to school, you know, that, I think it serves a lot of purposes. And I think, again, we can't go back to COVID numbers, but we can at least make it a little more robust and have some more students in there if we supported it.
Are we, just a question, because it wasn't K-8 prior to the change. Are you, are you talking about like the younger kids as well, or just the high school kids specifically?
Going back to what the model was, I'm not sure that one class per month would be appropriate for an elementary school. They need the variety.
It pretty much is.
But when you're looking at different classes for a high school level, it, it works. Being able to accomplish something quickly and not have six classes to take, but one class to take, and then you switch. That high school model, my daughter was there in high school, so I couldn't comment on middle school even.
Well, because we looked at, me personally, for BVVA for my kids, we didn't do it. Because I love the concept of saying, yeah, a month, you're in one class, you don't have to think about other stuff. But the draw against that was, well, the, the NCAA part is a big deal. So, and I don't know if that's fixable, because if the model's that way, then maybe the NCA just doesn't allow that. But other than that, I mean, I, I think, I like the, the month, the class a month model. It's different. I think the uniqueness is important.
Or even the eight-week, I mean, that would be even.
If they could, if they, if there was that option, and then if, because there are a lot of students that also go to the comprehensive high school. So they might take a class all year long, and the comprehensive high school will do sports and also, and then target some of those other classes that they're, that they're missing or they're credit deficient in. That would be the success. But having those, the option to go and take those larger classes, the NCAA A through G ones at the high school, whatever that, if there's a percentage, or if there's, it's possible to take some that way and some others, that would be worth looking into.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's back to me. So that's what I like to see with BVVA happen. I like to keep them separate. I would like us to invest in this program. I feel like this program has not been invested in at all. And we owe it to our students there and to our staff to pay attention to them and help them. I think Parkview is an excellent school, and I hope it continues in the model that it's been working. It really fits a need, as Mr. Frazier is a big fan. And I also have a friend whose daughter goes there, and I have a couple of friends, actually, and they are big fans as well. So I'm not talking about doing too much there. But USI, this is a huge concern. And when I toured USI, I asked Dr. Holloway a couple of questions. And one of them was, how many students from Valencia are attending? Is it still zero?
Yes, still zero.
Still zero. How many from El Dorado?
I don't have exact numbers.
I think that you told me about two.
Five at this time.
And most of the students there are from Yorba Linda High School and, and.
Probably the remainder of the high school students are split between Yorba Linda and Esperanza.
Esperanza. So this is what I've been preaching for, for year, not for years, but since this whole, for about a year now, this whole program, is if we want to elevate our athletes, which I think that was the goal of this program, then we need to invest in the different schools. And may, and we need to look at that. And maybe that is hiring a strength and conditioning coach for each high school, so that they can work with the current coaches that are there and help them put out workouts for their students that are off-season and, so that they can expand. And then they're working in conjunction. There's somebody in the weight room to help these students, you know, have proper lifting techniques, strength-building phases, all of those things. I think if we really, truly want to elevate our athletes, then we need to invest in each of the high schools and help them. And, and help them do that. Because right now, not everyone is getting to participate, and it's very unequal, and we need to fix that. And then also, I think we should really seriously look at the model at Fullerton District. They have. They have, their program is set up where students participate. They go to one middle school, all the students go to one middle school, and they take their core cons, their core content material in the morning. And then in the afternoon, they go to their chosen place. And they pay the chosen place. The school district does not pay for it. The parents pay for it. All they do, the school district does, is facilitate the independent study courses and making sure that the swim school, the dance school, the athletic program, whatever it is, is following the independent study guidelines, providing, making sure that they're getting the two classes. And maybe we just look into doing something like that for our middle schoolers and then elevating each of the high schools. And that's kind of what I would like to see us look into and advance.
If you want parents to pay for it, you want to talk about excluding kids. That, I don't understand how that works.
Just for the middle school.
Just for the middle school. Well, I, I just don't understand.
Do we have students from other middle schools around the district that have transferred there? What, could we have a breakdown of what that looks like?
Sure.
If we have zero from Valencia, do we have any from Valdez or Kramer or Tuffrey, since it's on that side of town?
We do.
Melrose.
I can get you those numbers.
So we do have middle school kids from these areas at USI?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I just, can I ask one more follow-up? I don't hate to butt in. My question is regarding academics. So I've heard that sometimes academics fall on the wayside. What do we do when students at both Parkview and Buena Vista, if they're in USI or anything else? What happens to them if they're not meeting their academic requirements?
So the law requires that we have a tiered re-engagement intervention plan. And so that is where we have a tier one, tier two, tier three. And with that, our teachers complete that form to notify the school counselor and myself. Then at that time, we notify the parents and have a conversation, you know. And prior to that, the teachers do that as well, to say, how can we help you? What's going on? What do you need? And so we do that. And then the second step is another follow-up to try and find out what we can do to help further support. You know, maybe they need a weekly turn-in instead of a monthly turn-in. Maybe they need to cut back on classes, you know. There's various reasons. And then the third step is what's called a re-evaluation of enrollment. And at that point, you know, we say, you know, you're still struggling to complete assignments, making student progress. So perhaps the independent study instructional strategy, because it is the strategy. The program itself is, is not, it's not working for you. And we really want you to be able to get, you know, what you need as a student.
Do the teachers and coaches communicate that? Do they talk to each other about that if it's happening at the academic level? Are the coaches aware? And do we have issues, instances like that where we have students not doing the work and not turning in the work and, and continuing to attend?
Yeah, we've come across some hiccups and some learning that we need to do. But Taylor and I put together where the coaches and the instructional assistant that they have can look at the, what's called the Apex Learning Model and see different reports. And it shows how much time the students spent, how much completion have they done, the progress of the class itself. And then kind of, where are they? Are they putting in the effort? But how, how does their, what does their work look like when they're doing it? And so then the instructional assistant at USI can pull kids during that morning time or in-between and say, okay, let's look at this. You know, you only spent forty minutes on this one class for this time period. You need to be spending a longer period. What can I do? What can I help you with? And then those reports also go out to parents weekly. So, you know, parent partnership is critical into independent study programs.
So if they're not completing the work and their training and their instructional coach or instructional aide is there, are they required to do the education piece first?
Yes, I, I mean, we definitely have more face time with the students than sometimes they see at Parkview, right? And so if we are informed of a student falling behind in their studies, we absolutely pull them from the training. We sit them down with a Chromebook and we make sure they log in and do their work. So that's the priority.
Dr. Holloway and I spoke regarding the schedules and what we could do to benefit the kids. Because academics, it does come first in order for them to be eligible to play sports, so.
Sorry. Just to go back to what we were talking about earlier, possible fee, fee charge. We were actually, today on our visit, we were brainstorming some ways to kind of help with that. And since the app itself is what we're paying the licensing fee for, we're maybe possibly even discussing an idea of, not every single athlete there needs to use the app. Like if, and if they choose to, then have those ones pay to use it. You know, put a, pay a fee towards that. They can, and they can most certainly, because I want to understand the model that they use at USI is that everybody's doing strength and conditioning. You can have a dancer next to a football player, next to a basketball player, all doing the same strength and conditioning classes throughout the, the facility. It's their specialized coaches that are the ones that are working with them in those areas. So if you're, if you have a student who just wants to go there for strength and conditioning, and they can go without a charge, but possibly if they want to further that and use the app and get the metabolic things and see what they're supposed to eat and, you know, track their growth and their, track their progress in the program, then they, that could be an additional cost on top of that. Or not additional cost, but that's what they would be paying for. We also talked about since, like, if you look at the numbers, there's five students in the dance class. The coaches were brought in before the numbers were out. So in hindsight, we talked about like possibly making a minimum of like, have to be fifteen dancers before a coach is hired for them. And in the meantime, like we said, they just do the strength and conditioning program. That way we're not having coaches, you know, with twenty in one program, five in another, and they're spending, you know, they're each getting paid fifty bucks an hour for, you know, five, five students and fifteen students at the same time. That may help it financially. We were kind of looking at other ideas, too, as also, like I said, cutting back the coaches if there's not a specific need for them. And yeah, making it maybe just something that people actually invest in, have a free model. But then if they want to further it on, like invest in it and maybe possibly pay for the extra services. Because I know we were talking about like baseball specifically. I said, what do the coaches do when they take them to Yorba Linda High School? Well, they're not working on pitching because they have a pitching coach that does that. They're not working on batting because they have a batting coach that does that. It's basically just getting extra reps in. So if they can do that with their team, if they can do that in another facility, there's no reason for us to have that coach with them. You know, a one coach with possibly two baseball players out there. It's kind of, that's one way we could possibly look at bringing the costs down. So just really maximizing our number of people and maximizing what we have, the resources we have.
I think, too, like looking at this, you know, whereas people are talking that Yorba Linda and Esperanza, they're really using the facility and it's, you know, and then we also have other, you know, middle school kids doing it as well. And we have, they said five El Dorado, and they have zero Valencia. But I also think that we have to think back to an election material that went out by Marilyn Anderson that said Anderson has been fighting against the Universal Sports Institute. A new district elite athletic program forecasted to only serve up to two-hundred students. Phase one of construction has diverted one-point-nine million from other budgeted projects, including the expansion of the kitchen at Valencia High School, a facility that feeds twenty-four-hundred students daily. So I think if you have, like, if we're looking at the numbers, I promoted USI, I promote OCSS, I promote all of our district programs. Todd has done the same thing. We haven't had a lot of promotion going on. And I can sum up these, well, let me just finish. We haven't had a lot of the promotion going on in some of the other areas because when you send out mailers to households in your district and it doesn't make USI appear to be a good program, it almost like demonizes the program. Why would the, why would the families want to, you know, attend a program when they're listening to their trust, you know, to their trustee in their district? And another thing, too, is, I was there last week, and I've, I've been there quite often. I love it. I would have totally done Parkview, USI if I was in high school all over again. It would have been absolutely what I did. But also, too, I think, too, when we were brainstorming the ideas of what we can do, I think promoting it, just as like we promote BVVA, Parkview. um, I think promoting it, just as like we promote VVVA, Parkview, USI, because these are the programs people are transitioning to. You know, we're, we're losing a lot of kids out of public education and they're going elsewhere. So I do think that marketing for these programs would be a great thing for all of it. See where we get, can we raise the numbers for VVVA or is this something that maybe the trend, we're just moving away and we're more into like the Parkview model, which would be fine. Um, but also too, you have a whole dance studio in there with, with mirrors. And so should we be marketing our USI towards, you know, like for cheerleading? And I would, I know we were always talking about the empty afternoons. I mean, if we're going to send coaches out to the different high schools, I mean, just know that if they're, you know, the high school coaches that we have there, when they go to, in the afternoon, they're coaching their own teams. So we would have to hire different coaches to go out there to facilitate the use of the team, which is, which would be no big deal, but we have to spend a little bit of money. But I also think too is, um, I don't know that the cheerleaders, I don't know that our dance teams, I don't know that they know that there is this large room with mirrors in there and that they can also do, you know, they could go in there, they could do their, their dance or routines, tumbling, they can do all these things, but then not only that too, is they have the opportunity to also lift weights, which is needed for cheerleading and tumbling and dance. And so I think too, when we do start to market this again, we do need to make sure that we're talking, you know, not only to just like the core athletes, but we're also talking to our cheerleaders and our dance team and, um, you know, making that available for them as well. Um, and I know we also talked about like, you know, the possible, you know, renting space out, but then I know that kind of like muddies the water because you just run out to everybody and you kind of want to keep it in-house. But, um, I was really excited that, um, when I was there, there was a, a full group, saw Travis. Um, Travis was, um, you know, doing, they were doing this long jump. They were like, you know, looking at what their, um, I don't know, what were they doing? When they were doing that one leg jump like three times.
They were doing a triple broad jump. Yes, one of our baseline assessments.
Yeah, so they're doing their baseline assessments. Um, and then you had the kids too, when you walk into another room, you have the kids and they're in like the, um, I would say like the education room. They're in the room where, um, you know, they sit and they do their work and they have their snacks. And so Esperanza Wrestling had just won the CIF championship the night before in wrestling. Congratulations to Esperanza. So their wrestlers were actually in there doing red light therapy on, you know, some of their, but those others were doing a light workout. You know, they were doing things like that. And so I sat there and I watched these kids with their red light therapy and they had these, you know, compression things on their legs. And then we had, you know, there was a tutor in there and you have these kids who are sitting there and they're being tutored by this woman. She's helping out. You know, and then you have some kids eating their snack and then some kids, you know, they're going in the next class. And so I think when we, you know, when we talk about this, like I think people need to actually experience what's going on there. Because when you experience it, the classes are full, the kids are just like, these are happy, happy kids. And that's one thing I noticed. These kids are so happy to be there and they just like love the program. But then not only that too, it's also, it's also churning them on to other sports. Like there was one kid who had no interest whatsoever in this one sport, but now since he's been around them, he's been around, you know, the different athletes, now he's got that interest. So I think too that we should be expanding it into like dance, cheerleading, tumbling, um, things like that. But, and I agree, I agree about the going out to the different high schools. I, I do, I love that idea. And I think that, but we just have to realize that if we do that, we may have to invest, you know, we may have to invest a little extra money, but it is investing in our students and our athletes. And so I think it's completely worth it. Um, and then also, you know, the talk as well for like middle school, like some of these kids, you know, they can't make it before school was one, one thing we were talking about was, you know, we had what, sixty kids for each class before school. So that's early. Sometimes parents can't get their kids to USI at six or seven o'clock in the morning. But is the afternoon option available? So that empty afternoon you were talking about. But once again, you would have to have a trainer there, an instructor, but can we fill that with, you know, our middle school kids or our high school kids that don't like to get up early and they're in their off-season? You know, things like that. So I think thinking like this and being able to utilize the kids that aren't, um, you know, in USI, being able to come in and do the strength and training and stuff like that after school could also be an option to be able to open it up to everybody as well.
Um, just to go back to the accessibility and who is using the program, um, I don't think it's anything political, to be honest. I don't think it's a coincidence that the director of the program is an Esperanza High School Wrestling Coach and that the majority of the students there are Esperanza High School wrestlers. And I know there's ten El Dorado High School CIF qualifiers who would have loved to have that recovery time. Um, so I, and they're not aware that they can go in there and go and have that recovery time either. So I think it's a matter of like we said equity earlier and about who is, who is able to be in there. We also talked about the recovery earlier and there's only eight, what, eight?
Six.
Six, um, red lights. So it is lit, it is limited. But again, I think it's who's involved and who is actually there, who promotes it, that is benefiting from it at the current time. And great, they're taking advantage of it and they're having their teams grow and they're, you know, doing better. That's wonderful. But I don't think it's a coincidence that that's why Esperanza and Yorba Linda are using it because they're heavily involved with their coaches there. And I don't think it has anything to do with anybody saying anything about the program. It's just a matter of who is, who's, has access to it and who knows when the times are available. And, um, yeah, and definitely they're, you know, using it. And like I said, there's other high schools, there's CIF qualifiers at every single high school, and I know they would have loved to have this, this opportunity as well.
Then they should sign up for USI.
Well, why did, why should they leave their high school to go to USI to do that? They're on a team at their high school.
You have, you have people who have done that.
But why? They're happy at their high schools. My son wouldn't have signed up for USI, but he, I'm, you know, it would have been.
But would he wanted to?
No. He loves the school experience. He loved being part of his school and he loved being a part of his community. He loved being a part of lunch activities.
Well, then, then those kids.
And he is, he is a kid.
Yeah, no, that's great.
He is.
Then those kids don't have to do USI. It's an option.
No, I know, but he, it would have been nice to have kids like him though have access to it. Like I said, we need to open it up to different students.
Our, you know, we could, we got six red light therapies. We could spread them out to all, one to each high school.
No.
You cannot, you cannot use, they're not portable. These are not portable red lights. They are attached to heavy chairs.
Yes, a chair and equipment can be moved. It was moved there in the first place. It can be moved to facilitate students.
So you're trying to dismantle USI?
No, I'm just saying, you don't have to go there to access to more students.
So here's something I'm going to suggest. This is not an action item tonight, and this has been such a really, really good, robust conversation and lots of comments. And we've taken, I don't know, I have eight pages of notes. I know everybody else is taking notes. We do have to bring this back to you to actually, um, have an action on it and take a vote on it, but we won't be doing it right now. But I, I will, we will, our team will con, continue to give you information, weekly information, that you've asked a lot of questions. We'll build that up, send it out to you. And I think when we come back in March, we can then have the discussion about it and then a decision can be made. There are lots of different ideas, I think, that have been wonderful this evening about compromises and way to look at this differently. I, I don't think we're looking at dismantling anything, but I think we're looking at how can, how can we, listen, the goals are this. We want to attract individuals, more students to our district, right? And we want to have parent choice so that there are options, like we just talked about with VVVA. So there's maybe for students that need one month, one month at a time. Maybe your idea, Tricia, about pushing out in the afternoon, that's really creative. Um, providing district-wide sports opportunities for more students. These are all really good discussions, but, and we could continue to discuss this, but I think what, what would probably behoove all of us is to, us to give you more information and then we come back, we discuss a little bit more, and then we take a vote on it.
Okay, I have two questions.
I like that idea.
Two more questions that, um, keep getting interrupted. Um, one is about BC Adaptive. Their funds are paid for out of special education funds. So whatever happens to USI doesn't have anything to do with BC Adaptive. Is that correct?
Um, whether or not that's an ongoing cost would be up to our, our special education department and Board of Ed.
Yeah, because it's not wrapped up into the USI budget. Is that correct?
That is correct. Well, it is.
Is it, is it occur at USI at all?
It is included in our USI budget.
But it is funded out of special education funding and there's something called Maintenance of Effort. And so every dollar you spend in special education, you have to spend that plus one more dollar every year. So it's just something we would have to look at when we look at funding.
But that number is included in these numbers that we're seeing here? The entirety of the cost?
Yes, that was, yeah, that was in the budget.
And it's being done only at George Key, right? It's not being done at USI?
It's venture students.
It's at Venture?
No, transportation posed a challenge with that, so Venture Academy.
It's there. So if it's housed there, it's paid out of there, maybe it shouldn't be in this budget.
Yeah, I've seen it at Venture as well. And I think we should poll the staff and the students there to see if that's something that they want to continue. If that's how they want to best use their special education dollars. Also, um, these licensing fees, I think, are very problematic and so that has to be something to consider. And, um, how much do we pay the coaches at USI per hour?
Um, our sports consultants make fifty dollars an hour and our, uh, two teachers who work with us are paid per period.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of mine.
What do other coaches get paid per hour? It's a stipend based on?
It's a stipend.
Is it approximately fifty dollars an hour?
Um, if you break the stipend down by hours worked, I think most coaches would agree it's nowhere near fifty dollars an hour.
So maybe we need to evaluate that.
Yeah, head coach stipend for one season is approximately fifty-three hundred dollars gross.
Depending on the sport.
For probably a hundred hours.
Right, no, yeah, but it, yeah. There's a difference, there, yeah, and I think there's a difference between the coaches that are coaching at USI because they're training versus coaches at the school.
Some of them are coaches at schools and there.
Boo, boo.
They're working both places, but they're getting paid more in one location. That's, doesn't seem.
Well, but if they're not, if they're not teachers at a school and they are trainers outside of the school, they're making way more than fifty dollars an hour. I'm just telling you that.
Absolutely.
Lots to look at.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, since, um, Leila is celebrating tonight, we do not have a student board report, but we do have an acting superintendent report. So I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Gray.
Okay, all right. Good evening again, President Anderson, trustees and executive cabinet members. So first I'm going to talk about National School Counseling Week. Um, we have joined educational organizations across the country to celebrate National School Counseling Week, which is February second through the eighth. And it's no secret that our students and families alike have time to, have come to rely on our school counselors and wellness specialists for support across our district. Um, as many of you may know, or maybe you don't, I began my career in education as a school counselor and it remains one of my most rewarding experiences of my journey thus far. Um, every day I had the privilege of making real tangible differences in students' lives and I was able to guide, support and help students to navigate their daily challenges and I really felt like I was making a difference. So the impact of the work that our school counselors do, um, stays with many of our students long beyond their time here. Um, they also work diligently to support the emotional health and safety of our students and we know that this is really crucial now more than ever. So please help us extend our thanks to our dedicated and caring school counselors and wellness specialists, um, across our district this week and even beyond this week. Our Attend to Achieve, um, you've heard it already earlier today about our new revitalized campaign. In the coming weeks, all of our sites will emphasize the critical importance of daily attendance. This campaign called Attend to Achieve, and I think we're going to get the logo up on the, uh, that's our new logo. Thank you to Laura Lee Mesa, who is so skilled at this, so that you'll see this on all the banners across the district, um, in classrooms. Um, we're, we're going to be sending out flyers all about highlighting the significant role that consistent attendance plays in fostering just immediate goals and long-term goals for students and their success. And the benefits include the development of positive daily habits, access to essential face-to-face instruction, increased social, emotional engagement, and the district's ability, obviously, when we, when our students are here, we can sustain and expand valuable educational programs. Um, a huge shout-out really to our incredible student services team for their dedication in driving this campaign forward. Thank you specifically to Dr. Baldwin Pedraza, Ms. Tanya Gordillo and Ms. Eunice Castaños. They've been working tirelessly to explain the initiative, support our school sites and ensure effective data gathering and monitoring, and your efforts are really making a difference. I know when I watched you present at the principal meeting, there were a lot of questions about data and how they track it and what some of the incentives can be. So I just, I'm really excited about the difference that we can make. Our goal, which I know we're starting halfway through the year, is one percent difference this year, which, which could really bring a significant amount of additional ADA. Um, so we're, we're hoping we meet that goal. Founder's Day Dinner, I had the pleasure of going with Board President Marilyn Anderson and Executive Cabinet Member Dr. Olivia Young and Tricia Quintero. And we had the pleasure of attending the PTA Founder's Day Dinner hosted by, um, PYLUC. And this is a hundred and twenty-eight years since PTA was founded to improve the lives of all children and families. And, um, we were able to hear from the leaders of, of PYLUC, including, uh, Tui Louis, who, um, all of them worked so tirelessly to support our PTAs and PTSAs by advocating for our students and our schools. And to top it off, I won one of the raffle prizes, which was a USC game package with hats, sweatshirts, barbie hug utensils and even a folding chair. So I was very happy when I left. And Tricia helped me carry it out. Shamrock and Run, that's coming up. Our partners at the Reach Foundation recently announced their annual Shamrock and Run. And we all, those of us who have participated in the past, I walk, I don't run. Um, so 5K and 2K events, which will take place on March 16th at Yorba Regional Park in Anaheim. And proceeds from this event directly benefit our middle school track meet and other programs hosted by the Reach Foundation. Um, it's an all-volunteer, education-focused, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, for those of you that do not know, and it benefits students across our district. So more information will be forthcoming about that. Another exciting thing is we just had our Employee of the Year, our Prize Patrol, that was on February 6th. We announced our Employees of the Year for the 24-25 school year. These eight employees were nominated by one or more of their colleagues or supervisors who detailed the outstanding contributions each of them made. I think there were more than eight. There were nine, yeah. The nominating individuals also described how the candidate demonstrates the district's four core values. So our Teachers of the Year are Vicki Corral from Fairmont. I just want to give a shout-out to her. She's one of our wonderful special day class teachers. Jennifer Garcia from Valdes and Rod Boz from Valencia. And our Classified Employees of the Year are Maria Peléz, Special Education Aid, again, from Golden. Carlos Martinez, our Night Custodian, who everyone calls him Chicken Nugget. And from Morse, Ayarim Flores, Secretary from Valdes. And lastly, our Managers of the Year are Adriana Jersfold, our Secretary of Human Resources Department, Gwen Radier, sitting right there in the front row, our Director of Special Education. And, um, also Laura Lee Mesa, um, sitting over there. And we, we had such a pleasure honoring all of them and they were so surprised. It was great. Each one of them knew the other one was getting it, but they didn't know each other was. So it was awesome. And they each received a check, courtesy of Schools First Federal Credit Union, and a plaque from the district to help commemorate their achievement. So congratulations to you all. And in closing, I want to talk a little bit about Black History Month. Um, Black History Month provides us with a valuable opportunity to reflect on and, reflect on and celebrate the profound impact that black individuals have had on shaping our world. This month, our schools have engaged in a variety of activities to honor this legacy. This month, our schools have engaged in a variety of activities to honor this legacy. Grade-level-specific activities and classroom lessons have featured Black authors and historical figures such as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Harriet Tubman, and Rosa Parks, as well as other influential African-American men and women. Daily announcements highlight key figures and lessons in subjects like ELA, history and social science, as well as math and science, where we've been spotlighting the impact of groundbreaking Black mathematicians and scientists such as Katherine Johnson, a NASA scientist, and George Washington Carver, inventor known for agricultural innovations. So we've really done a lot, such as video announcements and social media efforts, to continue to amplify these important messages throughout our school communities. These efforts reflect our shared commitment to ensuring that every student not only learns about history, but also connects with its Black history, but also connects with its ongoing relevance today. So while we celebrate Black history this month, we recognize that the contributions of Black individuals should be acknowledged and appreciated year-round, as they have helped shape who we are today and continue to influence our future. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
I just had a comment. You had sent over all of the, the list of all of the things that schools are doing, and I went through all of it and, and even the links and what they're, what they're doing. And I just want to shout out Lakeview Elementary School and, and Yorba Linda High School. They had comprehensive lists with so much more robust things too, and I'm sure other schools are doing more, they just kind of highlighted it, but there were links and, and different things that just showed what they were doing. So I so appreciate that and just want to say thank you to them and to you.
Okay, we've been going two and a half hours, so I think it's time for a 10-minute If we can have everyone sit down so we can start again. Hope you guys all enjoyed your little break. We will start with public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have 16 people wishing to speak tonight, and each speaker will be given one and a half minutes each. We ask that all the speakers repeat their name when they first come up, and I will call the first four speakers to sit on the front row and be ready for their comment. Phil Sites, Elise Proctor, Jenny Bremer, and Merritt Albarati.
My name is Phil Sites. I am the History Department Chair at OCSCS. Our entire OCSCS community, staff, students, parents, and local residents is devastated by the loss of our principal. I stand here tonight to assure the board that she built a team of educational leaders who will carry forward her vision, no matter what the challenges are. I'm confident that she will have, that she would say, the first to say, that our school's success does not depend solely on her vision, but rather on the incredible institutional quality and dedication of our staff. We remain committed to continuing the work that she began and that we began last year, and we started implementing this last September. We will deeply miss her leadership, but we are determined to continue the extraordinary work that she inspired, despite the obstacles. Thank you.
My name is Elise Proctor. I am a senior at Parkview School. I come here today to share my concern regarding the potential BVVA and Parkview merge listed as item 11.3 on today, on today's agenda. BVVA and Parkview are very different options. In my experience, Parkview has been a loving and caring community where parents, teachers, and students all collaborate together to make sure the needs of students are met as a whole. This is the reason why my family, which resides in Corona, has been attending this school for nearly 16 years. My concern with merging these schools together is that this, that Parkview's unique, special community will not be the same. I can only imagine what might ensue if this merge were to take place. I fear that if these schools were, were to merge into one, Parkview will not have the opportunity to continue to provide the same support and community as it does now. All I ask is that before a decision is made that will affect my school's community, please consider both the needs of Parkview and Buena Vista as a whole. Please don't give attention to just the costs, but consider the parents, teachers, and staff, and students in the process. And one more thing, and appreciate, and support for Counselors Appreciation, Appreciation Week, I ask that you would please give my counselor more than just a supply closet and consider giving her an actual office. Thank you for your time.
I'm Jenny Bremer, Teacher Eldorado. Good evening, all y'all. Ms. Gray, thank you for your words about Black History Month. I am here tonight to express my deep concern that February has not been formally recognized by this board as Black History Month. Despite Resolution 20-04 condemning racism, which was approved in 2020 and has never been rescinded, this is a failure to uphold a commitment by the board to honor Black history contributions and culture in our schools. Black History Month is not just a symbolic gesture, it's a vital part of our collective education. It ensures that students of all backgrounds learn the full scope of American history, recognizing the struggles, triumphs, and contributions of Black Americans that have too often been overlooked. Representation matters. When students see their history acknowledged and celebrated at all levels of our PYLUSD community, they feel valued. When all students in our schools engage with these stories, they gain a deeper understanding of our shared past and present. This board neglecting to formally acknowledge Black History Month sends a harmful message that Black history is optional, secondary, or forgettable. That's not acceptable. Your duty as a school board is to foster an inclusive and respectful learning environment. I urge you to reaffirm Resolution, Resolution 20-04 and publicly declare February as Black History Month, as you have in years past. Our students, families, and educators and community deserve nothing less. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. I am a parent of a eighth grader at YLMs and a sixth grader at OCSCS. Last year, before OCSCS was a possibility for my sixth grader, I dreaded the thought of him going to YLMs, quite honestly. He's not a kid who loves school, even though he's super smart. He would constantly get the magically disappearing stomachaches. For all the parents out there, you know what I'm talking about. But we chose OCSCS because of its innovation and that it presented, you know, a different educational system and possibilities for my sixth grader. At OCSCS, he is participating, he's involved in percussion, he's a student ambassador, he started a club, he's engaged. All things that he would not be doing if he wasn't there. He even volunteered at the science table at the open house last year, last week, and spoke with parents about what he is learning. I'm told he is constantly raising his hand in class and participating. OCSCS has created an environment for him to thrive. As a parent of a student at both middle schools, I see the difference in learning and the perspectives that both approaches have, and quite honestly, I wish more schools approach learning like OCSCS does. My ask is, with Dr. Fisher's departure, that you don't search for a new principal and instead allow Mrs. Gibbons and Mr. Goodwin to continue the work they're doing and give the students and the staff the consistency, consistency and the support they deserve. Thank you.
Okay, the next four, Steve Safka, Leslie Alexander, Julie Scharad, Sarah Is Not, she left, and Paula Powers.
Good evening, all. My name is Steve Safka, and I'm a district taxpayer, not a guest here. Trustees Anderson, Buck, and Quintero, let's cut right to the chase. The devastating loss of Dr. Beth Fisher from OCS and this, OCSCS in this district lie squarely at your feet. In my humble opinion, the three of you are nothing more than a hypocritical and monumental disgrace to this district. You don't serve the students, you don't serve the teachers, you don't serve this community. You serve only your power-hungry union bosses. Your treatment of Dr. Fisher and OCSCS has been nothing short of disgusting from day one. Under her leadership, that school is thriving well beyond expectations, and yet, instead of supporting her and the success of the most progressive school in this district, you've done everything in your power to sabotage it, as you're obviously trying to do with USI. Ladies, that's not leadership. That is pure duplicity and cowardice. Last month, you sat here and lied to our face, pretending to care about the fairness and accountability while making backroom deals and attempting to punish those who didn't fall in line. You preached about putting those students first, but your actions made one thing clear: you didn't give a damn about those, those students or that school. Shame on the three of you. This district deserves far better.
Mrs. Blades, I believe the LCAP progress should be attributed to the hard work and dedication of our teachers who show up every day and give their very best to their students in spite of Dr. Chernus and the chaos he has created. Based on the USI information from tonight, it is clear that we have been misled and misinformed repeatedly by Mr. Frazier, Mrs. Blades, and Dr. Chernus in every aspect of USI. In my opinion, the most egregious disinformation regarding USI came when Dr. Chernus told the board and this community that the Division of State Architecture, DSA, had confirmed that the construction for USI at the Casteloma Building did not need DSA approval. An approval that ensures a building is structurally safe and fire-safe, as well as accessible. Mr. Frazier and Mrs. Blades confirmed that what Chernus said was true, that DSA approval was not needed. Evidence would later expose that was a lie. The building at Casteloma was shut down because it did not have the needed DSA approval, and USI was moved to what is now OCSCS. How can this community have confidence that Mr. Frazier and Mrs. Blades would put the best interest of our students first? When given the opportunity to stand up for student safety, they chose to support and repeat a lie instead.
Hi, Julie Scharad. PYLUSD has spent millions on USI, which has resulted in 30 new students. A check was issued to Training Lab for over 1.2 million despite their questionable status with the franchise tax board and City of Placentia. The presentation shows that $4.2 million has been spent on the USA, USI pathway, including more than $40,000 for impractical chairs. It seems like there's been a lot of unnecessary spending on the USI pathway without a lot of oversight. Since a new board has been installed, has anyone done an inventory of equipment purchased through the Training Lab, ensuring that we received a competitive price on all the assets and all assets can be accounted for? January 2025 Agenda indicates that $33,104 was spent on coaches for Parkview. This must be a mistake, but I wonder how many other charges were assigned to Parkview, Buena Vista, or even OCSCS when they should have been assigned to USI? Page 118, the Agenda indicates that USI had 1.1 million 367445 in revenue in 2024, 2025, but I don't think this is possible because pathways don't have revenue. Parkview, where instruction happens, has the revenue. Not all Parkview students attend USI. I would like to see an audit of the district's spending to make sure that expenses were allocated properly to USI, Parkview, Buena Vista, OCSCS, and other PYLUSD schools before any decision is made about Parkview or Buena Vista. I don't think the board can make informed decisions without any of these entities unless they know the true cost of the district. In light of uncertain school funding by the federal government, PYLUSD needs to make sure that they aren't throwing away money on pet projects that incur deficits, and instead, we need to support the students who are already in the district. Thank you.
Paula Powers. Trustee Anderson, thank you so much for your countless hours that you give to our district. Your dedication to our, to your constituents is commendable. It's been a measure of grace to see how you have navigated through the negativity to provide our district with the transparency you and the board need to make thoughtful decisions that will affect our district for years to come. You have searched for the right people at the right time for the right reasons, and I am so grateful for your leadership. Thank you for dispelling lies spread to divide our community and for showing up when you need to. Thanks for visiting our schools and supporting our kids. We can see how much you care about your presence in our classes, at special performances, and at after-school events. We see the pride you share for those of us who love this district. Thank you for supporting the throngs of PTA parents who dedicate so much of their time, money, and effort to make each day brighter for our kids. PTA volunteers like you, trustee Buck, and trustee Quintero know from firsthand knowledge that our PTAs are our school's lifeline. Thank you for appreciating their dedication and partnering with them on the goals they set for their schools. You've been a student in this district, a parent in this district, and we are so fortunate to have you as a school board trustee in our district. Thank you. The next four, Jenny Raya, Shanny Murray, Denise May, Lynda Cohn.
I'm Jenny Raya, and first, I want to thank you, Marilyn, for spending over two hours at Rose Drive, visiting every classroom and engaging with our students and asking thoughtful questions. Marilyn, your willingness to connect with our school despite it not being in your direct area means a lot to us at Rose Drive. I also want to take a moment to sincerely thank you, Tricia, for coming out and honoring my father-in-law, Joe Raya. Your present meant so much to our family. Joe was an incredible man, one of integrity, honor, and deep dedication to the students and staff at Eldorado. He truly loved the community, served, and his impact will be felt for generations to come. Tricia, as a part of the Eldorado family, you understand just how special it is to be a Hawk. Joe embodied the spirit every day, and knowing that you were there to honor him means the world to us. On behalf of the Raya family, we deeply appreciate you for taking the time to celebrate and remember a man who gave so much to others. Your support and kindness are truly appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shanny Murray, and I want to say thank you for your unanimous vote to investigate district administrators, to ensure we have accountability in PYL, and thank you for maintaining the Dependent Charter status for the OC School of Computer Science. Thank you for ensuring that the district's interests are kept in the forefront as you address Prop 39 requests from two outside charters for the upcoming school year. I hope you share more information about the status of these requests in the coming weeks. Thank you for recognizing in the Good News Report the importance of making sure every student and family feels safe, supported, and valued here in PYL. Thank you for maintaining access to the repository of district-approved resources for the monthly themes of inclusivity, and thank you to all the PYL educators celebrating Black History Month. Thank you, Marilyn, for your calm and steady leadership despite the hate I've heard yelled at you during these meetings. Finally, thank you to everyone in the PYL community focused on encouragement and support, fostering a positive environment for our students. Thank you.
Hi, Denise May. I'm going to go a little different. We're talking about months. January was School Board Appreciation Month, and nobody mentioned it. So I wanted to take a moment to thank all of you, all of you, for all you do for our district. I think you're all there because your heart was in the right place, whether or not we agree, and I appreciate all that you guys do for our schools, our community, and most importantly, our students. I appreciate all of your time and effort put into coming to our meetings prepared. I also want to thank you for acknowledging the concerns of our community in an equitable manner by putting in the Good News Report, which is emailed to all families, resources available, and for the continuing support of Diversity Months. These efforts are vital in fostering an inclusive environment for all students and families, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Lynda Cohn, once again. It would be incredibly naive of me to assume that my once-again-repeated calls for the restoration of Dr. Chernus and Dr. Gates to their assigned positions would have any difference whatsoever for you, Mrs. Anderson. You're not movable on this, on this point. That's the bad news. The good news is that there are a lot of people out there who are listening and watching this meeting, and they've seen tonight a clear indication of Dr. Chernus and Dr. Gates' sound leadership in the reports that were given. It's already been noticed by a lot of us and called to our attention. For them to be continual, continued to be absent from this dais is a disgrace and a colossal waste of money. Not only that, but there are at least, a short research revealed to me there are at least 10 points where these two men have promoted programs and policies in the direct interest of the students. We need to get this information out there to the community so that they have a full understanding of what's really happening here and why these two men are being treated so unjustifiably. Thank you for your time.
The next four, Karen, John Quackebush, Mark Fury, and Dave.
Congratulations. Because of your vendetta, you lost the most intelligent, creative, ambitious principal we've had in this district. Beth Fisher's dedication to students and innovative approach to learning was clearly appreciated and demonstrated when nearly 60 parents and students showed up to support her. Yet you continued to harass her and undermine that school. It was disgusting. What more do you have planned to undermine this school? Clearly, I think tonight we're seeing some of that. And you've hired a conservative-hating investigator to investigate our conservative superintendent that you clearly hate, and she has not provided us with any evidence of wrongdoing on his part, and she's now out on a planned medical leave for the next three weeks? How many hundreds of thousands of dollars is this going to cost people in this district? How much are you willing to spend on your personal vendetta? Marilyn, Carrie, and Tricia, that lie you all campaigned on during the election about USI costing $3.5 million has now been shown to be that just a lie. Clearly, you were trying to slander him, and most of the money that went to the startup costs, which are a one-time expenditure, was builder funds that did not take from other sources. schools. And we all just saw that the enrollment trend at Parkview that was clearly decreasing every year has finally made a solid turnaround. That's thanks to USI. Yet I see you are now trying to undermine that school, too. The increases we just saw in student performance and graduation rates over the last year under Chernus show that he was absolutely bringing success to this district, so why are you trying to destroy him?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Bringing Chernus and Gates back. Thank you for your time. Marilyn. Thank you.
Of course. Yeah. Don't start my time yet, please. Well, good evening, trustees. John Quackenbush, to start off, I'm sure most of the board, like me, learned language in high school for the first time, so I wanted to know that that's basically why we put our daughter through a German Saturday Language School. Then she did her German school and high school classes in high school, got the seal of biliteracy. So I'm, you know, going through that with this dual-language academy. I think it's a great idea. Love the discussion. Love to keep up the ideas on that. I think it could be more robust. Then also, just kind of a note, I think, you know, I wish the Department of Education would actually mandate more dual-language at elementary school type. I think it's beneficial. Maybe one day we can have more languages if that's the options that's available for us. So I'd like to request that DLA stay in academy and not change to a charter. Consider the parent feedback and have more surveys to figure out what's best to do. Also, on the Parkview merger, great board discussion, USI, great board discussion. I loved hearing all these ideas. I think we need to capture this stuff, figure out the best way to move forward with these three models. Is it together? Is it separate? Also, USI, now it's here. It needs to stay a district thing, and so we need to keep that up. Last thing, real quick, I request that the board have the staff perform a study of the cost-benefit ratio to add solar panels for the parking lots.
Thank you.
Mark Ferry. I think we ought to start off with celebrating some success. I was overwhelmed by the presentation and the improved metrics that were all shared tonight, so congratulations. And I do agree that Dr. Chernus and his team had a whole lot to do with that, and I think they should be recognized. Obviously, the focus has been back onto the core subjects of math and English, and let's not go backwards, okay? Our schools were being saved in the last two years, and the campaign still irritates a lot of us in the community that the teachers' union and the people supported by the teachers' union were out there, "Let's save our schools." Save our schools from what, success? So that's basically... The other thing, I was maybe a little bit disappointed. You guys are in closed-door session for a long time and actually have no comment about what went on. You maybe didn't have to go through the details, but some sort of update. There's a lot of uncertainty about Dr. Chernus, so I just put that out, that I'm disappointed personally that we didn't hear a thing.
Dave Radlauer. Someone quipped recently to this board, "Why not rush?" Well, based on the conversation that we saw tonight, this is why you don't rush. These programs, these ideas, they need to be fleshed out. We don't need to be bringing this back for a vote at the next meeting. It's not ready. What exactly are we voting on? The USI program, as presented tonight by its staunchest advocates, is hemorrhaging money. Why can't we address that issue? You're going to try to villainize the board president for being fiscally responsible and saying she's trying to dismantle the program, which she's not, but I'll stand here today and say, you know what? Maybe we need to start thinking about an exit strategy. This program is not working. We change it more often than I change my socks. A week ago, a month ago, we were trying to put it with the OCSCS. It was at Parkview. It was an independent charter, not an autonomous charter. It hasn't been fleshed out. The model just simply doesn't work. Can we save it? Perhaps. But let's have reasonable, rational discussions instead of trying to politicize somebody being fiscally responsible for a change. Marilyn, 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 thank you for what you do. We'll get through this together.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to revise 2025 Board of Education Meeting Schedule. Adopt the revised 2025 Board of Education Meeting Schedule. Why is that on there twice? Do that.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Frazier and a second by Mrs. Blades. Is there any comments or discussion?
Clarification. So we're just basically moving that LCAP meeting?
We're adding.
We're adding the LCAP meeting. It's crossed out 4 o'clock, which means that's a normal... April 8th is a normal meeting, correct? April 20...
Yes.
April 8th is a normal meeting, and then 22nd is the review study. Okay.
Adding a little more time just to go over there.
But we're doing that at 5, not at 4, because we were combining previously. Is that right?
We were going to start at 4 with the LCAP. Now we're doing a whole nother day.
At 5.
Got it.
Okay.
And that's the only change.
Yes.
And thank you for adding that. I appreciate it. Last time it was so rushed, and then we had to have a follow-up later, and it wasn't in public, and we weren't able to do that and only could do it in little groups, so I appreciate this a lot.
Yeah. I like the extra day, so thank you. Okay. Anybody else have a comment?
I'm just glad it's not on April 15th. That's all I...
So we'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0.
Move to the next one. I'll make a motion that we approve the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. We are to vote for no more than seven candidates and then submit it afterward.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mr. Frazier. So we have to choose who our delegates are?
If I could jump in, only because I've been on Delegate Assembly for a number of years. I currently was not on for the last year but have recently been reappointed, which will begin in May. So we have meetings coming up in May and December of each year. I've worked with most of these people before, and I'll just... And then there were some that were additional write-in that have been on before that missed the deadline for a variety of reasons that added in separately that you'll see. What my recommendation would be is to take the six candidates that were initially listed, Beverly Berryman, Bonnie Castrey, Jessica Guerrero, and then on the other side, Rhodia Shed, Angela Hernandez, and Susie Schwartz. And the reason why I picked them is because they submitted on time. The recommendation I would make for the last one is Art Montez. He is not actually going to be able to be at the next two meetings. So to be on Delegate Assembly, you only have two a year. It's a two-year term, so of the four meetings, he's already going to be missing two. So my recommendation would then to add in the write-in candidate, Carrie Flanders, and she is from Brea.
I was going to suggest Carrie as well, so I think that would make sense to me.
I haven't technically worked with Jessica or Angela. They're going to be relatively new. I know Bev Berryman because she works at Critten Children's Home. I've worked in her in that capacity. And then Bonnie and Rhodia and Susie I've worked with in the past. That group of seven, that would mean that four of them have been there before, and then three are new. I like the idea of having new people come in and also having some history there, so it gives it a little variety. There are also all over different districts except for the Art and Angela, but replacing Art with Carrie would eliminate having two people from two districts and just kind of make it more wider, Orange County-based. So that's my recommendation.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay. I think that sounds like a really good plan. So let's just review. It would be Beverly Berryman, Bonnie Castrey, Jessica Guerrero, Rhonda Sheed, Angela Hernandez, Susie Schwartz, and Carrie Flanders.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
4 to 0 with one abstention. Moving on to the next. Okay, we are to the Consent Calendar. Actions proposed for the Consent Calendar. Items are consistent with approved practices of the district and our dean routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance at the scheduled meeting and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote. Are there any items to be polled?
I have one to poll, 17.7. Yeah, it is... There's one that classified as amended, and then we had the one that was taken off. Sorry, certificated, amended, and then the 24 taken off.
Okay. I'd like to poll 17.2, 17.3... Nope, that one I don't need to poll. I read it. 18.10, and 18...
I'm glad you did that because I missed that 18.10.
Oh, and 20.6. Anyone else? Okay.
Ready for a motion?
So we need a motion for the remainder.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Consent Calendar as amended and with those polled.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the first one is 17.2. I'll make a motion to approve the warrant listings in the following amounts. Check number 270637 through 271303 for the current year expenditures, December 29, 2024 through January 25, 2025, for $9,333,042.27 and payroll registry, 6A for $15,145,274.78 and 6B, $6,362,275.82.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mrs. Buck. I polled this because there were some expenditures that I thought we just needed to talk about from the warrant listings on January 12 through January 18. There's two, and they're the All-American expenditures for USI. The one is for $10,723.02, and the other one is for $16,192.04. So about $27,000 for USI. Can you tell us what that equipment's for? Please?
So I'm actually looking at my listings here, and I don't... Is it for the Riddell All-American?
Uh huh.
Oh, okay. That is for helmets and shoulder pads reconditioning.
It's not USI.
Well, that's not USI?
Isn't that USI? It's 636.
They don't have shoulder pads and helmets.
Well, that's where it's...
What was it billed to?
It's football equipment.
What is it?
So Taylor, Dr. Holloway oversees all high school and middle school athletics in addition to USI, so anything under that site code is referring to Dr. Holliday... Holloway. So it is not for USI. It is for our high school programs.
So how do you delineate if it's USI or high school?
We just have it all under Dr. Holloway. It's the same way that each of our directors has different codes, and they oversee multiple programs, and the object codes tell you what type of cost it is for, but the location code tells you which director it's under.
If I'm not mistaken, that was one of the things that Gary had said about why it's difficult to break out the actual cost because Dr. Holloway has so many things underneath her, so I think that should be taken into account when you look at any of these numbers. But thank you.
We could look at a separate code for...
I just think when we're purchasing equipment, it should be assigned to the high school or the program, not to, you know, one...
Person.
One person.
When the schools are paying for it...
What does it matter?
It comes from their sites, but when it's coming from Educational Services, it comes from our code.
Because we're trying to...
So that's one of the things that we cover for all the schools.
Right, because we have to cover the safety equipment, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so the helmets and the shoulder pads and stuff would be something we have to cover at the high school sites.
It makes sense that we have to purchase it. I just...
It just seems odd labeling.
When we're looking through it and we're thinking that those numbers are... It just makes it all confusing.
So the coach stipends would be under the same...
Same. There was a question about a...
Yeah.
Whenever it comes from middle school athletics, that's all under Dr. Holloway as well. So we can definitely create a separate code, so it shows specifically USI versus athletics.
Yeah, because I think we've... I mean, that's why I pulled the HR report, because again, it's being applied to Parkview, and I don't think it's a Parkview expense, and so I just want to make sure that we're making sure that it's being represented and going to the right locations, so... Okay. Any other comments?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Before I assume? Motion carries 5-0.
We want our kids to be safe.
We do want our kids to be safe.
Yeah, we do. I just want to make sure that it's, you know, billed to the right place or where it should be.
And I just wanted to make sure, isn't this one of those things that we approved last board meeting, the warrants? Aren't these things are approved? The 17.2, is that approved at the last board meeting?
Purchase.
Okay. So ready for the next one? That was me. Ready? Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the Architectural Services Agreement for Architectural Design Services for replacement of the softball scoreboard at Valencia High School with Gadda Ode Bannon Architects effective February 12, 2025 through December 30, 2025, project number 6657.
Second.
We got a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mr. Frazier.
The reason why I polled this one, not for... I mean, I know that they need a new one if it's broken, but I polled it just to request that we bring the five-year facilities plan back and look at it and see where we are with what we've spent so far, what the plan is, what things are coming up at the school sites that need to be replaced so that we can have another conversation. We looked at it a year ago, and it'd be nice to look at it again. That's it.
And we are currently working on pulling that together.
I know. Thank you so much for doing that.
And... And also too, since we're on the subject of scoreboards, Valencia High School, I think I, a few months ago I'd asked about their pool. Their pool scoreboard was completely out, like you couldn't tell it's a lane, you couldn't tell anything. And so if we can look into what the cost would be to get that replaced, that would be great.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Hey, motion- Eighteen-ten, I believe.
I'll do this one. Make a motion that we approve the adoption of honor civics course for eleventh and twelfth graders at Yorbalinda High School in partnership with the Nixon Library.
Second.
Okay, I, I think we're all very excited about this coming. I actually spoke to somebody that's been involved in this recently and it sounds really like an amazing program. There's been a lot of questions about the adoption process and things like that and I'd, I'd like us to kind of review how new courses are added because I feel like we should be having presentations for the community and more information brought forward. So that's why I polled it, because I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that this was coming and this is exciting for our community, especially the partnership and all the hands-on work that's been going. I know it's been brought up in like superintendent reports, but we haven't actually had a presentation on it, so.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Typically, all of our curriculum is put on, noted on a thirty-day review. Like we have some now at the district office. This has not been up for thirty-day review. I'm not comfortable approving any of this, I haven't seen any of it. I think that it needs to go on thirty-day review before we even consider it. I'll be voting to abstain because I think we need to bring it back and look at it again. I'd like a deeper dive into what, what that is. We did that with multicultural studies. I'm assuming we'll do that with other curriculum that comes up as we develop. Since this is a full development, we should, we should be reviewing it and approving it as the full curriculum before, before, we should have the thirty-day before it gets voted on.
Yeah, understood, we did not, yeah, I am on. Understood, we did not put the curriculum on display because it's still in the process of being finalized. Currently, the TOSA and the school teacher that are going to be, that is going to be teaching the course are planning on utilizing supplemental resources that are provided through CDE, for example, and they have not determined if which textbook they will be using it. So this is for the approval of the course so that we can put it on the registration cards for Yorbalinda High School juniors, incoming juniors and seniors so that they could determine how many students are interested in the course to see if they can run it. And then the TOSA and the teacher plan to bring forward the curriculum for finalization and board approval and review, going through that process. So really the timeline was, because we recognize when we bring it all together, but it was really the course registration timeline that's driving why we need the course approved so we could just create a course code for kids to sign up.
And what if we end up not approving it and we have kids that have signed up for it, it's impacted all of that? Seems like a little cart before the horse.
Yeah, we would absolutely then just refer them to their alternate elective choice. But understood, if you are not comfortable, if that's the board decision, not comfortable approving the course so that the kids can-
Sign up.
We can determine the kids' interests, then we can proceed a different direction, whatever the board would like.
Is there a way to get information on the website so everybody in the community can look at it and review what, what this course looks like?
Sure.
Because, I mean, in its current form. Because you sent us, I can't remember what day.
Her pacing guide.
The pacing guides and it's just, you know, there needs to be more. Again, we don't need to go so fast that we mess things up, but we have a solid program and we have buy-in from the community and et cetera, so.
If we had more information and more to look at and the community had more to look at between now and the next board meeting, how would that impact the planning for registration?
I'm going to ask Mr. Young to speak up because he's, if you can come over to the lectern. He's looking also at the UC doorway submission timeline, so our TOSA's mapped out every deadline she needs to hit and she's been working really diligently on developing the course and so.
And she probably needs this to be able to move on to the next step.
Yes.
And for this one, we had mentioned a little before that it was a two semester course, but it could be a one semester or a two semester. There's a lot of unknowns right there too, so how do you also plan for that?
I'll do my best. So our history, social science TOSA's been working with the teacher at Yorbalinda High School as well as Nixon Library. They're going to be sourcing materials across what the Nixon Library offers. They have actually a division of education at the library alongside what's offered by the federal and the state governments and their curriculums. So, so they are kind of crowdsourcing per se what the civics coursework will be. What they try to do is break it into two semester courses to appeal to more students. So let's say I'm an athlete and I have a fall/winter sport, I can't take it for a semester. There's the opportunity for you to still be involved in this course second semester. Students can either do the first semester or the second semester, a combination of both. They have an opportunity to earn the state seal of civic engagement through this coursework, so it's really like a hands-on course that happens at Nixon Library. I know you kind of know all of these things. But because they've been meeting with them starting at the beginning of the school year to develop this course, like month by month, like unit by unit, theme by theme, they haven't quite landed on that, they have that pacing guide, but they don't have every single curricular resource fully put together. I would imagine they could have that by the next curriculum council, actually they have to, have it by the last curriculum council, which is the end of March, March twenty-fourth. Then goes to the April, as quickly as possible, the April board meeting for a full approval of a thirty-day pilot, which then gets us to May, right, where it would actually be finally approved.
So if we would get it in April, that's when it would go on a thirty-day review and we would be voting on May, in May, on that particular curriculum.
Correct.
Would that be June if it's on thirty-day in May?
With curriculum council being at the end of March, we would then, if it's approved, put it on a thirty-day display, notify the board, the community, through whichever manner we would like, and then the board could take action thirty days later, so April should be.
May.
May.
When did the students in high school start registering?
This week.
This week.
Right now.
And they usually start with the, and that was the urgency that Dr. Young spoke to, is that they wanted to make sure they had the blessing to move forward with advertising it to the student body because it's again for seniors and juniors, which is where they start. And then it's not only, later on is when they get to sophomores and freshmen. So the, the course registration cards are literally being published as we speak. And there wasn't a great way to accelerate the-
And this is only at Yorbalinda High School for the first year to start, right?
Pilot. Exactly.
Okay. Well, I appreciate all of the background. I, I don't have a problem with it now as, as we've talked through it, as long as we have the option, well, as long as we are definitely bringing that back, having our thirty-day review, allowing the community to see it before we do that final vote.
I don't think we're allowed to, right? Like, we're not allowed to have curriculum, right?
That's why I was like, so, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
The next one, him too.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, vote is unanimous. Okay, the next one is eighteen-point-eleven.
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract and student data privacy agreement with AVANT Assessment and Assessment and Assess Spanish Language Fluency for promoting sixth through eighth grade DLA students.
And eighth grade.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mr. Fraser. And I polled this because the contract information on there says that it's for eighth grade students only and I just wanted to make sure that we were testing our sixth graders and I don't know if we need to change the contract.
That's, that's a great question. So the, the AVANT associate who I spoke to over the phone, it's one test. It's the same test for a sixth grader, a seventh grader, and eighth grader. So it's really just totaling up eighth graders times two plus sixth graders currently at Glenview to get to the hundred and seventy licenses. If required or if requested by the board, I'm happy to go back to the associate and request a new contract to specify and have eighth grade listed separate from sixth, but it is-
If I could clarify too, the agreement doesn't state the grades, it's the quote. And the quote, it does have the right number of licenses, they just didn't put the other grade. So the agreement is good, it was just the quote that didn't miss the grade, unfortunately. So we can take it back for revised quote, but the agreement should be fine.
No, looks good.
As long as the licensing is, is good and those students are there, that I'm comfortable-
We're happy to pay for the licensing.
Can I ask a question just regarding the assessment? How quickly will we get this? I mean, I know they'll be planning for the following year, but will they be able to take this information and use it for summer programs to, to do that enrichment or, or boost in those areas where the kids are a little bit behind?
So the request that actually came from Oaks was to assess the kids as early as possible, which is now, so that they had enough time between now and let's say April, which is when most high schools receive their placement, math placement, foreign language placement, things like that, so that they had at least two months or at least a month and a half to shore up any weaknesses or skills that needed it through Apex Coursework, through their mini electives program at Oaks. So the goal is to assess them once and that, this is also a request from the DLA parents during our eighth grade night for them. Assess them once, see where the, the holes are and then have like a month and a half to study and prepare for that final assessment. We're, we're pretty confident with that a lot of these students, again, out of the eighth grade DLA are going to place into that Spanish three native speaker pathway. But we've never tested our eighth grade DLA students with this assessment. Eighty districts across the state of California use this assessment for placement.
And the reason why we're also testing six is, as Mr. Young has shared, our deal language students have never received discrete Spanish instruction by level at this point and so they are all over the spectrum as far as their language proficiency. And so while we are implementing this at the sixth grade, which will help create more discrete Spanish courses at the middle school level, we need them to catch up. So we'll administer it to eighth and sixth this year and the next year it'll be cycling down.
Thank you.
Hopefully it'll just be at sixth in the future.
I'm excited that we're testing them and, and seeing, seeing where they place. Okay, let's make, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? None, okay, so we're going, motion carried. We're to twenty-point-six. I'll make a motion to approve the certificated human resource report.
Second.
Second. I made the motion and a second by Mrs. Buck. I polled this because of the, again, the flag football from Parkview. I just, we, we keep bringing this up every meeting.
It's because it's under Dr. Holloway. Same answer.
We know.
It's the same answer though, every board meeting.
I know, but we need to make sure that it's transparent, that we know what the school is, it's that all the middle schools are receiving coaching.
It's because she's district level.
Yes.
Okay.
But we've talked about that we could fix this and, and I think it's possible, right?
Yes, we'll look at some coding to see how we can change that so we can start following exactly the locations that it's going to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, motion carried. Now we move on. I'd like to turn the time over to Mrs. Gray to introduce our board discussion on governance.
Okay, I'm very aware of the time, so I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible. So we had discussed in the past is just about approaching board governance. We've talked to, about this for a while. We've had the community express a desire for that and also in discussion with all of you. So there is board governance and advisement that could happen if this is the desire of the board. So this is only a discussion item right now. There will be no vote on it tonight, but the goal is to explore whether this is something that you, the board, would like to see happen, if you want to engage in it and just to understand for me, so I know what direction you direct me into in terms of where we go with board governance. So what I would say is for board governance, we're looking at accountability, transparency, long-term success of a board and the governance and the running of the policies and so forth of the district and just to engage in thoughtful deliberation, ensure that our policies align with what we have in mind for students and staff needs and then really kind of balancing oversight with, with trust and just granting staff autonomy and knowing where our roles are. And so there are different options about this, but what I first want to get from you, is this a desire that the board has? And then we can talk a little bit about options. Yeah.
I think especially having a new board member come in, it's, it's a good thing as a, as a new group that makes decisions, that we have discussion about some different protocols, how we communicate, anything that might be different than, than we did without that particular new member here. So I, I'd like the idea and I'm interested in hearing more.
I agree. I would love that. Especially with everybody, so we can all be on the same page.
I think good governance equals student achievement, so yes, I'm, I'm for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's great. Are we talking a lot like study sessions, workshops, like-
It would be a workshop, but again, there's other, there's ways we can do this. So there is, there are people that we could bring in that would do governance, which is, I think you've, some of you have done that before, but there's also ongoing advisement, if that's something that, that people want, like coaching or somebody to call for answers about things. We do have, there are some models, I've heard from other superintendents, where they'll bring in a retired superintendent and actually a board member that's been a board member for a number of years and they come in as a dyad and they come and they help so that you can all relate to, not just the superintendent, but somebody who's been a board member. So that's an option as well. So you could do governance, you can do it for a half a day, you can do it for a full day. You can say, let's add on advisement. There's all kinds of things about talking about collaboration and creating policies, how you communicate with each other, what is the, your role as a board, what is the district director's and staff members' role, all of that would be discussed. But I think with you guys, I just want you to kind of give me some direction so I know where I go and then I can follow up and then send you dates, send you people and send you all that information.
Yeah, get, get us some options.
Options, okay.
I would like to see the options, but I think we could, we can take as many governance as we'd like, but if we continue to have board members who are directing the superintendent, you know, individually and breaking board bylaws and doing things like that, I mean, we can take as many governance classes as, as we like, but if you're not going to abide by the board bylaws and government code and things like that, then it's really just a waste of time.
That's true, so I hope we can all agree that we can come to the table and work through some of that, talk about bylaws, talk about policies, procedures, how we interact and agree on something. We've done it in the past, it would be nice to do that again.
I think we're really missing, you know, some simple protocols that would really help everybody know what their role is, so.
And I think it's really typical when a new board comes together for this to happen. I mean, it's not, I don't think it's anything unusual, right?
And if I was to-
I don't know, Todd, we didn't do one for you, right? You were.
I think I'd prefer half-days.
Half-days, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, full day seems excessive.
Not adding on to a meeting either, because that makes it really difficult for work and planning a little bit ahead so that it's either at the beginning of the day or the end of the day, so that half-day isn't right in the middle.
Okay.
Not on a weekend and not on Zoom and not on, how many?
Not on Zoom, okay.
A little bit facetious about the Zoom thing. If there's parts that are over Zoom, that's fine, but.
So let me just make sure I have this, I have my direction. Yes, we want board governance, yes, we want discussions, we want to communicate and we want options. Just like for our parents, we want options, right? So half-days sound better. We don't want to add on to meetings so that they're really long. We don't want to have it on a weekend and just, and not on Zoom. And then I'll send you all kinds of options, people, times and all that and then I'll, I'll gather it all and then give you information of what you- gather it all, and then give you information of what you all come up with. Okay? Alrighty. Not that long, I don't think.
That was a good discussion, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so now we're to, um, communications and board reports. Mrs. Blades.
Alright, so last Wednesday, I went and I watched the Esperanza, um, wrestling team win the CIF championship, so congratulations to them. Um, and I was not aware that we have a world championship wrestler on that team, um, and so that was very, very fun to watch. Um, also too, I wanted to say, I had to screenshot this, but, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna butcher his last name, but we have a USI athlete who was just named the Freeway League MVP for Yorba Linda High School, and their basketball team, and they are also league championships. Um, so congratulations to Rocco Gofolio, um, as the Freeway League MVP. Yeah, it's quite an accomplishment, I mean, these are like, good things, we can clap for these kids. And we can clap for Esperanza Wrestling, too. Um, and, you know, Eldorado did very well, too, correct? Um, so yeah, so we're kind of killing it with the sports, and so that's good. Um, I'm really thankful for USI, and BVVA, and Parkview, who came here tonight, and, um, you know, did this, um, presentation. And I do think that if we continue on this path, and if we're able to get more, um, you know, advertisements and stuff out to the community, that we can really grow these programs, and we can, um, do a good job with the community. I was disappointed, um, to hear about Beth Fisher leaving, and I understand that she's gone, undergone a lot of harassment, not only from people, um, in the district, but also, um, you know, people in the community, which is just very sad, because, you know, she took a chance on a program, and she actually made a wonderful program. And to try, you know, I'm, I'm really glad that she has an opportunity for promotion, and that where she's going, I mean, it really will open up the doors for her, but I just feel like the attacks that she, um, had on her, um, was just very unfair, and it's actually kind of tragic, because she is a Yorba Linda mom, she is a person in our community. Um, nobody wants board members to call their school and ask why a principal is not there, or why she's out sick. We have to follow employment law. Nobody wants that to happen to them. And so, I'm just very sad that, um, that this was how she had to exit, feeling like she was harassed. I also wanted to ask a question, too, and maybe we could do some research on this. Um, the resolution that was done by Suki was way different than the resolutions that were done by the CRLA, and also by, um, Magnolia. And for some reason, in the resolution for, um, for OCSCS, it really named her, it singled her out, and it kind of like, made her, um, you know, it kind of actually like, kind of tarnished her reputation. And when we compared it to the other charter schools that have been denied, we noticed that it was, did not have the attack of the principal of the charter school, and it didn't name, like, basically anybody in there. And so, if we can compare that, and if we have to bring a resolution back, that, you know, we can maybe do over, so it's not tarnishing, um, a staff member's reputation, or it looks like it's targeting, um, I'd appreciate that. I'd also like to, um, maybe have people look into why on December 20th, um, when OCSCS called the Ares Desk, um, Ares, the Ares Desk was told, um, to them that they were advised or directed that they weren't to help OCSCS any longer. And so I'd like to, a little bit of, um, information about that. So, I just, uh, I, I just feel bad, because, you know, people can set up parents, say that they support it, they support it, they support it, but then on the back end, we're, you know, getting all of this feedback from people saying that, you know, I'm not supposed to, I'm not supposed to help you, I've been directed not to help you. And so that's when you have teachers, and staff, and community feeling like this is a targeted thing against a staff member. And so also too, I just wanted to remind, I, I had a really sad, um, you know, a, a really sad phone call today as well, because a staff, or not a staff member, but an employee in our district has said that they've been threatened by a union member, that they were going to lose their job, and that they were also issued a gag order. And so I just wanted to remind all of our employees, teachers, staff, whatever, union members, our employees, us, as well as the district, and so if you need, or if you feel the need, if you're being threatened, and you're being told you'll be fired, or you're being issued a gag order, a union member is an employee of the district, and they cannot threaten to fire you, they cannot put a gag order on you. And so this behavior needs to stop. I was hoping that Yolanda would be here, um, tonight. And so I just hear, I just hear a lot of this unrest, like, I also heard too, that a teacher in another district, she was interested in, you know, going to Parkview, she called the district office, and she said, I'd like to, you know, apply for the Parkview position, and they said, well, we don't even know if Parkview will be open this year. So we're getting all of this stuff that's going on, and like, all of these accounts, and so it's targeting, like, the USI is targeting Parkview, it's targeting these certain, like, schools, and so I think that's what's causing a lot of chaos in our district, and so, maybe we should have like, one person just answering the phone that is very well, you know, knowledgeable, and knows what they're talking about, because I think that's how some of this misinformation is, um, getting out there. And, um, I think that's it. I didn't want to like, really like, you know, take it down on a, on a, on a, on a, um, a negative note, but I just felt like that was some of the stuff that was really heavy. I've had a lot of phone calls from the OCSCS parents, had a lot of phone calls from people that just kind of feel like they're just down, they, you know, they don't want to be in our district anymore, they don't want to, you know, they want to pull their kids, I mean, so I think that we just have to do better, I think we have to answer the phone better at the district office, and don't give, if, you know, don't say, even if, if it's your opinion, or if it's a rumor, like, you know, don't say Parkview's not going to be open, or, you know, this, because then it's like, you know, it's like a telephone game. Everybody starts saying, okay, Parkview's not going to be open, just like when Buena Vista's, um, uh, website went down for a few days last year. Suddenly, Buena Vista was closed, and everybody was coming here and yelling and screaming that Buena Vista was being closed. So I think we just need to do better on the communication, and stop with the rumors, and, um, I don't know, just do, just be a little bit better with things like that. And then I also wanted to, um, um, address, um, some of the, the funding and stuff, I would like to know, like, we haven't had an attorney, um, sit in our board meetings for hours at a time, at the billable hours, and so I think maybe we need to talk about that as a board, because I think David Huff came to maybe one or two of our board meetings, he went into closed session, dealt with what was needed, but it seems like with all of these investigations, the investigator that was hired for all of these, um, I don't know, maybe we call them witch hunts, or, you know, just investigations, um, $530 an hour. And so now we have an attorney sitting here in here full-time, and the investigator's $530 an hour. And so, we're talking about fiscal responsibility, we're talking about all of this stuff that's going on, but yet, you know, we now have someone sitting in our meetings, you know, how many hours is this, six, five, six hours, so that's a lot of billable time, a lot of things that can be going back to our students. And so, I just think a few things like that, if we're going to talk about fiscal responsibility, if we're going to talk about these things, then we should not be just hemorrhaging money on attorneys, and, and things like that. Um, I'm hopeful that I'll be able to get out to a couple of school sites, um, next week and the following week, and, um, hopefully a few more games, and, um, just really proud of our district, and proud of our teachers. Um, OCSCS, hang in there, um, USI, hang in there, everybody needs to, um, you know, there's always storms, and we've always weathered storms, and so, um, you know, we'll just stay positive, and, uh, we'll keep going, and it's just like, uh, Mr. Seitz said, you know, like, the staff is what, you know, it's, it's not just one person, you know, I mean, obviously you had a fearless leader over there, but you have an excellent staff. And so, the staff members, you know, at OCSCS, they share the vision, and they're there for the students, and so, you know, OCSCS will carry on, um, because they've had great leadership, and, uh, and everything, everything will be okay, it'll all work out. So, I'll see you guys next month.
Alright, well, um, just want to start out, I had a great day at Eldorado on January 30th, I believe it was. I started the morning, um, with Career Day, they had about 75 guest speakers on different careers, um, anywhere from an NCAA, um, referee, football referee, to, all the way to engineers, and so it was a really great variety, um, business owners, it was great to see a lot of community members there. Um, I was there in the morning, um, presenting just as an elementary school teacher, just, um, my profession, and then in the afternoon, I had a great visit with the principal, and got to visit a lot of classes, I saw the ed law class, um, I saw the, um, Neeld class, and also I visited the DMA, DMAA class, and the Jazz, one of the Jazz classes as well, so that was a great day, um, had a great conversation with them, and was wonderful to see all the learning that was going on there. Um, today, actually, or, um, I visited USI just before the meeting, had a great visit there, um, like I said earlier, brainstormed a lot of ideas with Dr. Holloway, and, um, hopefully, like I said, we can get everything going with that. Um, it was great to see everything in person, from seeing it in videos and pictures before. I did attend, as stated earlier, the, um, PYLUC dinner with, um, Mrs. Anderson and the cabinet members, it was a fun time, as always, and I was great, it was just differently, definitely different being there as a board member rather than a PTA member, so, but still nice to see everybody that I miss, and, um, wonderful time with a lot of good people. Also, um, I attended the, um, Eldorado, the kids play that they performed, it was a wonderful night, had a lot of fun, my niece had a wonderful time there, got to sit front row and watch everything, and it was very interactive and great for the kids, so they did a great job. It was also good to see the variety of students that were involved in the, um, musical theater, um, performance, and we had athletes, we had theater people, it was great to see everybody get involved and put that show on. Um, I wanted to send a shout-out to the Cal State Fullerton Dance, um, Palm, Division One Palm, um, champs, they were in Florida a few weeks ago, and I wanted to include that, because we do have former, um, Yorba Linda High School and a Valenta High School dancer that's on the team, so we're really doing a great job in that area, and it was exciting to see them performing on the next level, and winning the national title in Division One Palm, so, wanted to give them a shout-out. Um, as stated earlier as well, I had, um, attended, um, the services for Mr. Raya, and it was wonderful to see how many community members, coaches, teachers, um, that were there, and just a wonderful, um, feeling of celebration of his life, and it was definitely an inspiration. Um, he was a definitely a, a great man, and left a great legacy, so, I, it was my pleasure to be there, um, and to see, to see that, um, witnessing it firsthand. And I also was at the basketball game where he was honored as well. Um, and then I just wanted to clarify, I know, um, there's some community members, um, concerned about the transfer policy that, um, for the, like, fifth, sixth grade that had changed, I had received a few emails, um, concerned about transfer policies changing, and that they were receiving letters, um, stating that their transfers that they thought were guaranteed K to eight, were now being rescinded. So I just didn't know when that was changed, if that was put out publicly, because it seemed to take everybody who got that letter by surprise. So, I know it wasn't, I don't think like, elementary school kids got it, it was more like the fifth and sixth grade parents that seemed like they received it. So I just wanted to say, if it's something that did change, can we put that out there to the community, and make sure everybody knows, so nobody's blindsided when it comes to registration, and they have to go back to their home school, so, especially with those dates coming up. Alrighty, thank you.
Alright, I'm going to make this short and sweet, I gotta get back to work. So, it's been an interesting last month, been fielding several calls, texts, emails from community members and administrators, and, uh, about several different things happening. And I just wanted to state, take this time to state that I am sad that Dr. Fisher is leaving. Um, I know she's going to do great things wherever she is, uh, but I think that it's, it's really unfortunate in the circumstances that she is leaving, um, so that is sad. And she will be very missed, but I think that we will, we will rise up, OCSCS, and it will continue to be a successful venture. I think it's, uh, very innovative, and I love innovation and, and unique opportunities for our students, I think it's important that we continue to support that school. Um, I want to give a big shout-out to, uh, Acting Superintendent Renee Gray, she's been doing a phenomenal job, keeping us all informed, and doing so much work behind the scenes with her team, and, and just trying to keep things moving as we wait for these investigations to get over. And then lastly, I am excited for, hopefully these investigations get done very quickly, and we can get Dr. Churnus and Dr. Gates back, and we get this back to business, and close out the school year strong, um, and just continue to put students first, because that's what this is all about. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, uh, I mentioned Delegate Assembly before, um, that's coming up in May and December, so I'll let you know what happens after that. Um, CNAC, which is the California Nutrition Advisory Council, has scheduled all their meetings for this year. Uh, we'll have quarterly meetings, the first one's coming up in March, so I'll keep you posted on anything that's coming from there, that may be related to nutrition and education for students. I went and visited my daughter, who's away at college in Hawaii, not a bad place to go. Um, so I've been a little busy for the past couple of weeks, and haven't been out as much as usual, so I missed Founder's Day, I missed, uh, Mr. Raya's celebration. Um, so, uh, thank you for the invites on that, I'm, I'm sorry that I missed both of those, I would have liked to have been there. A shout-out to our friend Bryant, you all know Bryant, um, who we randomly get emails from, or will see out in the community. He emailed me and said, are you going to the flag football, middle school flag football competition, and I didn't know what date it was, so he told me the date and where to go. Um, so I was able to go, and ran into him there, and we walked around a little bit, and, um, watched the flag football competition for all the, um, the students, so it was great. Um, so thanks Bryant, if he happens to be listening. Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to, to bring up was, um, the Placentia Library, every year has an author's luncheon, and, um, Mrs. Contreras, who's the librarian, um, contacted me and asked if we were going to be able to, if, if we could, um, support a table. And what that means is, that you have a person that comes and hosts the table, and you basically serve tea to everybody there, and you talk about the book that is coming up. So if anybody might be interested in that, or if the district is interested in that, um, you can either let me know, or reach out to, um, to Jeanette herself, and, um, it'd be nice to participate in that if we could. Um, missed it the last couple of years, just because of timing. Um, but that's it for me, and thank you very much.
Okay, so I'd like to start off my, um, board report tonight with a couple announcements. There, right now, we have AP hu- human geography, AP psychology, sociology, psychology, and chemistry, all high school textbooks that are on display right now, um, for a 30-day review. And, um, it just seems like we're missing a step here, because I would like us to re-look at Board Policy 6161.1, because we need to be clear about putting textbooks on display for public feedback, and, um, and it seems like we've missed that step. They were on display, I came to the district office, they were already there, and, um, I wasn't notified. So if we can compare what our AR policy is to our board policy, and then, possibly, uh, make some recommendations, because our board policy says that we need to get, um, community feedback, and that is the best way, is to let the community know when our books are on thing, on display. Um, I'd like to let everybody know that Love Placentia is coming May 3rd, and currently we're looking for project leaders, so if there's anybody out there who would like to lead a project for Love Placentia, you can go to loveplacentia.com and fill out the application. And not to forget Love Yorba Linda, it is scheduled for April 26th, and as I get more information, I'll be happy to share that, as part of the board reports. And both the love projects are a great way for students to get community service, and they're on different Saturdays, so they can get two, it's like, you know, six hours of community service, just for, um, participating in those two events. I got to attend the Wizard of Oz, put on by Van Buren Elementary, and it was, um, such a great musical, the kids are so talented, and, um, I felt really honored, because I got to go on stage and honored the two long-term volunteers that have been working with Van Buren Elementary, um, for the last 15 years, putting on their school plays. So, big shout-out to Ann and Linda for, um, serving our community for so long, and they're retired teachers, so it's like, they've never left. I got to go watch, um, the Valencia Boys Basketball Team, as they secured their league championship against Laguna Hills, so congratulations, Valencia High School Basketball. I, um, went to the Miss Placentia, Yorba Linda Canyon Hills, and Ting Scholarship Competition, and it was such a great, um, night, seeing our students compete for the title, and, um, and hearing about how they have been serving our community for the last year, and, um, it was just incredible, the amount of hours, the volunteer hours that they have spent, and they've been coming into our classrooms, um, talking about, um, compassion and action, and, and STEM-powered, and they were both, um, principals of the day in our districts. And, um, and we also got to see some, um, our elementary students participate in the Little Sisters Program, so that was fun. I attended the Secondary Superintendent of... I attended the Secondary Superintendent Advisory Council and it was great to listen in on the LCAP discussion and to get the feedback from our community. So that was a really nice thing. And then I also got to attend the senior night at Valenta High School for the girls. And I'm happy to announce that they won that game and they scored league champions. So they start their CIF journey on Wednesday tomorrow. So good luck to them and to all of our teams that are entering CIF this week. I got to attend the PTA's Founder's Dinner, which has been stated before. And I am just so grateful for the parents that support our schools and uplift our community and our students. School visits, I went to George Key and Venture. And I love visiting schools, as you know, and getting to see our students at work. And while I was there, I went into the Venture and they were studying Harriet Tudman with their novels. And it was great to sit there and listen to their feedback. And one of the things that I loved about it most is as the teacher was holding the discussion, the students knew how to use their book to find the answers. And I think that's such a great life skill is, you know, we don't always have the answers, but knowing how to find them. And so I just love that. And another classroom, you know, they were trying to figure out like how many dollars they needed to purchase items and all these great life skills that they're learning. I also got to meet the job coach there and she's helping the students with resumes and filling out time cards and making sure our students get paid. So I love that our students are out in the community working and earning dollars. And at George Key, they were celebrating Chinese New Year's that day. So I got to jump into a scavenger hunt through the school. And it was really fun watching the students look for items to celebrate the Chinese New Year, including, you know, red envelope stars and find their friends' pictures on the walls and things like that. And my overall takeaway from them was that they just are doing such a great job taking care of the individual needs. And I don't know where my notes went for Rose Drive. I went to Rose Drive as well. And it was a great experience. I, a TK student made me a custom sticker and I wore it all day long, even out to dinner. And everyone kept asking, where'd you get that cool sticker? I'm like, TK at Rose Drive. I also saw our TK students put together the most unique thing I've ever seen, an aquarium, where they taken their math manipulatives and stacked them up with all the different aquarium. And they had food at the top to feed all the animals. It was, the imagination is great. I love that. I went into several, pretty much all the classrooms except for the ones with the sub. And a lot of our students were working on their novels and having discussions and writing out answers and and annotating. Thank you, it's getting late, in about what they're learning. And I just saw such great learning happening there. And I love, one of the things I like to do in the classrooms is kind of read the walls and read all the students' work. And in one of the classrooms, they had it all piled up from day one. And so you could have got to see the the progress that students have have made and all the things that they're doing. And it was just great to visit with a few students and ask them about what they're doing and they're learning and seeing really engaged students in their classrooms. So that is the end of my report.
Tonight, we adjourn in memory of Joe Raya, who passed away on January 13th, 2025 at the age of 94. Mr. Raya served as a senior plant coordinator at Eldorado High School and was a dedicated member of the PYL USD community for 37 years. In recognition of his exceptional service, the gymnasium was named in his honor on October 1st, 1996, a lasting tribute to his valuable contributions. His unwavering dedication to the school and broader community will always be remembered. He will be greatly missed by our district and community. So make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:38.
Second.
In Mr. Raya's honor, yes.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Contrero, a second by Mrs. Buck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero and we'll end this meeting at 10:41.